Board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. Finally, a roll call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the WebEx meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Heller? Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Chair, you have a call.
All right, thank you. I did get communication that appears Mr. Patterson is experiencing some signal issues on their end, but nothing involving our end of the system. So totally understandable and, you know, thank you for joining us, Mr. Patterson. Any public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening? We'll start in the room. Seeing none, anyone online? Seeing none. I entertain a motion to approve the September 16th meeting minutes pending no revisions.
I just had one revision.
Okay.
It said under the Human Resources Committee report that I gave it, I'd like it to reflect that that was not me. I'm assuming it was you.
From September's, or, yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, it would have been me.
Yeah. Otherwise, just changing the person who gave the report to you, a motion to approve.
All right. It does appear-
Mr. Murray, second.
Okay. Got a motion by Ms. Stevens, second by Mr. Patterson. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Right, motion passes. Reports and presentations, our diversity, equity, inclusionary activities, acknowledgements, Hispanic Heritage Month continued through October 15th. In the month of October, we recognize Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Filipino-American Heritage Month, German-American Heritage Month, Italian-American Heritage Month, and Polish-American Heritage Month. And the Wali Hindu Festival of the Lights was yesterday. Next up, the Economic Development, Growth, and Innovation Strategic Master Plan informational update presented by Fourth Economy.
All righty, can you all hear me? Yes. Okay, so we're going to share some slides with you all this evening to give an update on Ferguson Forward. I'm Nicole Muse Gilcuchy, I'm a director at Fourth Economy, and I'm joined by Justin Wheeler, who's also at Fourth Economy. Ferguson Forward, of course, is our Economic Development, Growth, and Innovation Strategic Master Plan for Ferguson Township. It's the first of its kind, and we're very happy to be working on it with you all. So a little bit about our firm and why we are here, why we're excited about this work. We're a firm that's been doing this type of planning for 15 years, founded in Pittsburgh. Today, we're a national firm. We have 20 staff all over the country. The bread and butter of what we do is economic development and community development, strategic planning. We do organizational planning as well, and we like to have a holistic look at those issues. So more often than not, we're looking at economic development through the lens of outdoor recreation, cultural amenities, quality of life and quality of place for folks that live in a community. So we take that lens to this work in Ferguson as well. And we've developed several similar projects in other townships, boroughs, counties, and even regions in Pennsylvania, and we take lessons from those as well. Some are on the screen listed there. We see similarities but also differences, of course. Our work throughout Pennsylvania has taught us that no two communities in Pennsylvania are quite the same, and we've noted those unique attributes in Ferguson over our time. We're also bringing in lessons learned from Pennsylvania's statewide 10-year housing action plan, which we have to develop. It will be released this fall, budget pending, and we are just wrapping up our work with the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture on their food and agriculture industry 10-year strategic plan. So a lot to learn from that and apply here in Ferguson. So I'll give you an overview of the planning process, and Justin will share some updates, key takeaways, and then we'll share next steps before we open it for questions. So as a reminder, the goals of the planning process, we've been asked a couple times by steering committee members and members of the public, what is Ferguson's vision for economic development? And luckily, that's what this planning process is all about, developing. So because this is Ferguson Township's first economic development strategic plan, the plan will establish a vision statement that will guide economic development and growth and innovation in the coming years. The township is really committed to building an inclusive, innovative, and resilient economy that serves both current and future generations. We are developing a vision statement with our steering committee, which I'll share more about those individuals in just a moment. The strategic plan is really meant to guide Ferguson Township in identifying opportunities for sustainable growth, diversifying the local economy, and improving the quality of life for residents. So a little bit of a timeline update, we started this process back in May of this year and have spent the last several months doing a number of things. The first is integrating findings from regional plans, other local plans. We know that we're not planning in a vacuum. Ferguson is part of an ecosystem, it's part of the center region, it's part of Center County. So we really wanted to make sure that this plan builds from other initiatives, takes advantage of other initiatives that are happening in the region. We also formed a really excellent steering committee, and they've been helping to guide this process all along the way. We've met almost monthly with them. And community engagement, we really wanted to make sure that this plan was guided by the community, which of course includes residents, it includes folks that work in the township, it includes business owners, other community leaders. So we will share a little bit more about what that has looked like to date, engaging that broad community. We've also done a fair amount of data analysis and developed a SWOT analysis for Ferguson Township based on economic trends, demographic trends, where we've seen the township and the region historically, where we think those trends are going to bring the township over the next five and 10 years. And we are moving towards this last phase of our project. So November, December of this year is dedicated to developing our strategic plan, drafting it, sharing it for feedback with a number of groups, and then of course, a public release of that plan. As I mentioned, our steering committee has been instrumental in this process. This is an esteemed group of local leaders spanning different industries, different sectors, public, private, education, and nonprofits. So, you know, kudos to those folks on this steering committee. They've been really instrumental in helping us guide this process. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Justin to take us through community engagement.
Okay. Thank you very much. So as Nicole mentioned, we want to make sure that this is receiving a lot of public input. We'd like this to be a resident-led process. So we've led resident engagement in a number of ways, through a survey, through multiple promotional materials, a landing page on our website, and through attendance at public events. You can see that this number needs to be updated a little bit, because we've had some more engagement since, but we have engaged with at least 919 residents so far in this process through a variety of channels, as I mentioned, through events, roundtable discussions, public meetings, community survey, and through our website. So I'm going to share with you some very high-level findings. There's a lot of data and a lot of notes and a lot of things that go behind this, so forgive the high-level nature of this, but for the sake of time, we're going to go through these fairly quickly, and I'll touch on some of the areas that we looked at. So the first is business climate in Ferguson Township. We know that Ferguson Township lacks, has a lack of co-working incubator or flexible commercial spaces, which are a challenge for entrepreneurs and small businesses. There's a strong interest in strengthening regional collaboration, particularly with county-wide initiatives, workforce development partners, which could boost Ferguson Township's impact in the broader region. And we know that Ferguson Township is a leader in innovation historically with companies like AccuWeather, MTA, Vidion, and others. So there's a strong innovation foundation, as well as Science Park Road and proximity to Penn State, which give a lot of opportunities to grow the innovation sector in the community. Regarding farming and agriculture, there has been a strong voice in the community from both farmers and non-farming residents that there's a big importance placed on preserving farming and agriculture in the community. That looks like not just land preservation, but helping to support those agricultural businesses to make sure that they're sustainable and able to continue operation in the community. We know that there's a lot of changes in the agricultural economy, especially of late, which put additional pressure on family farms. So those farms may be looking to diversify and bring other value-added products and other opportunities to expand their income. And there's going to be a need to balance preservation and flexibility. So while farmers have various views, from desiring fewer regulations and more autonomy to also seeking clearer township support, the goal is going to be needing to find that balance so that agriculture can evolve in the township. Regarding quality of life and place, we note that Ferguson's outdoor assets are a defining strength, being the gateway to Rothrock State Forest, all of the trails, the parks. It's truly a paradise for people who are into outdoor recreation. We have, it's been expressed that arts and culture are potentially under-leveraged, so stakeholders noted that Ferguson Township lacks a lot of visible arts venues, events, gathering spaces that showcase local creativity. They point to things like, you know, Millheim, Bollesburg, Bellefonte as, you know, being places that they would like to emulate. It's also been noted that community identity and placemaking could use some additional focus. So participants have said that Ferguson lacks a clear center or cultural hub. Pine Grove Mills, in particular, is often mentioned as a very strong asset that could be sort of a creative corridor. And housing infrastructure. So we know that housing affordability and diversity is impacted, the ability for folks to live and work here in Ferguson Township. There are zoning development patterns that may need to be addressed to promote missing middle housing, you know, which is impacting development costs and maybe discouraging development. There's a perception of a difficult development environment in Ferguson Township in comparison to other townships and other places within the center region. And something that has been noted as a concern is some aging infrastructure and services reliability challenges that may be on the horizon, which are going to be something that we are going to flag as important to long-term reliability, and that might require proactive planning and investment. I think that might be. Yeah, that's awesome. And about you?
So before we answer any questions you might have, just wanted to leave you with some next steps for the planning process. We are hosting our build sessions this week. These are meetings that we are hosting on a number of topics, including responsible development, supporting businesses and workforce, and quality of life and quality of place. So those are going to help us develop our strategies and our recommendations, which will make it into the draft plan, which will be under review by our steering committee and others on staff, as well as other critical stakeholders. So with that, I think that is the end of our presentation.
Okay. Any questions from the board for our presenters?
I have none.
Okay. Going online, we will recognize Mr. Heller.
Yes, thank you for that, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate this. So I guess my question is, you know, when we think about economic development, if we extrapolate the benefits of economic development, one of them is, well, hopefully it means not having to raise taxes, because there's more money coming into the township because, well, the economy's been developed, you know, for lack of a better term. So I'm wondering, one of the biggest things, and it was pointed out in the presentation, is maybe concerns from developers or builders. So I'd like to understand a little bit more about the stakeholders that you met with, how many builders, from what companies, and, you know, what information you might be able to share in that aspect?
Absolutely. So we had met with a number of developers and those involved in real estate, both commercial and residential real estate in the community. We did hold a developer roundtable, and I apologize, I don't have the names in front of you, would be happy to get that to you, but I think a lot of them you recognize. We had representatives from SMA Homes participate in build sessions just today, and we have spoken with those who do commercial development throughout the community and other townships in terms of stakeholders. And I apologize, could you repeat the second part of your question?
Oh, no, sure. And I was just wondering kind of what those, you know, I think you answered most of it there, you know, the developers and from what businesses. I guess also part of the question is not only how that engagement went, but the length of time that was spent in the engagement. Do we have a sense of hours that have been committed to working with developers?
Through this engagement process, we had a roundtable with them, which was about an hour and a half. We've had individual one-on-one interviews with a number of them, which usually run 30 to 45 minutes. And we've had participation with them in public meetings. So I can't quantify the exact hours, but we've tried to engage with them in a number of different ways. We've also had some of their responses captured in the survey.
Okay. No, that is great, and truly, I really appreciate that, because again, I want to make sure that we're, and we are definitely, and through your work, it's much appreciated, you know, engaging and having those thoughtful conversations. So I applaud the work that you've done here in really helping us kind of see the vision for the economic development strategy as we go forward here. So I look forward to the next steps, and just wanted sincerely say thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions? Just going to say if none, no. Thank you for the presentation, thank you for all your hard work. Sounds like we're getting a very good amount of feedback, which, you know, is always well welcomed. I do see, it looks like we had a little delay there on Mr. Patterson's end, but it appears Mr. Patterson has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the next steps, I was curious if any of the, maybe just an understanding of the draft plan, is that to include any type of kind of legislative ordinance recommendations? Or what is in the draft plan from a high level?
Sure. So draft economic development plan will include recommendations that lend themselves to noting areas for future actions. So while we do not plan to provide, for example, model ordinances, we're not a zoning and planning consulting firm, we will note areas of note that we've heard in existing policy that may be ripe for review, for example. So along with recommending a review of such policies, our strategic plans also tend to include details about the stakeholders that need to be involved in that process. So for every recommendation that we make, you know, one thing we never like to do is put a laundry list of action items on the township's desk without any support behind them. So in addition to listing stakeholders, partners that need to be at the table to make every strategy successful, we might also note resources that might be needed to implement, as well as sources for those resources. Just as an example, and I know I'm getting a little bit farther from your question, but during our build session, we talked about public space and trails and development of those types of assets, and we noted, one of our build session participants noted, DCED and DCNR, for example, are not only great partners, they also provide funding for certain types of activities. So that's how we'll structure the recommendations, and I hope that answers your question.
Thank you so much.
All right. If no further questions, I think thank you again for your time, definitely appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, our authorities, boards, and commissions reports, and we'll start with the Center Area Transportation Authority update and introduction to CEO Todd Horsley.
Do you have your slide deck?
I believe-
If you don't, they're just words, and we can just talk them. Hi, I'm Dave Richel. Thank you for the invite in tonight. So we're going to talk, do a little bit of a tag team here, I'm going to save the best for last, introduce you to our new CEO, Todd. But I first wanted to talk to you a little bit about some of our focus over the past couple of years since I've been here, and sort of tee things up for Todd whenever he takes over. Really, our focus for the last couple of years has been threefold. Stabilize and improve our operations, try to balance our budget and get our fiscal house in order and stabilized, and really strengthen the workforce, strengthen the organization of the workforce. That's really been our focus for the last couple of years. In terms of stabilizing the service, I'll just keep talking while that's coming up.
We're pulling it up now.
Is that all right?
It's on the agenda. Thank you.
Do you want me to wait, or do you want me to go ahead?
It's up to the chair.
You could go ahead. It looks like we'll have it up to her momentarily.
So in terms of stabilizing our service, as you probably recall, the biggest thing we did in that area was really a big redesign of our route system, which we implemented over the last year, and that was really a transformational change for CADA. We really focused on concentrating the service where the people are and dramatically improving our frequency of service, trying to shorten our trips, and that really yielded a lot of positive results. Over the last couple of years, our ridership has been up more than 10%. Our on-time performance has also increased about 10%. Our complaints are down more than 30% over the last couple of years, and in some cases, our ridership on certain routes is up more than 25%. So we were very happy with those results, we're transporting a lot more people because of those changes, so that's been great. We also started a bus stop improvement program. You probably have noticed in the center region, all of the CADA bus stops are new. We took down the old faded ones, put up new ones, and that was just the first phase of what's going to be a multi-year program to take a look at our bus stops. We've engaged to contact a contractor through PennDOT to inventory all the bus stops in our system. We just got the initial report of that, and we're looking at the stops in terms of the accessibility of the stop, how the improvements of the stop are, and we're combining that with our ridership data to identify where we think we need to make improvements on our bus stops. This is directly related to you folks, because although we put up the signs in the shelters, you own the stops, we don't own any of the property. So we'll be working collaboratively with you, and Todd's going to talk a little bit more about the next steps of that. We also implemented new software for our CADA GO service, which I'm sad to say wasn't working yesterday because of the Amazon outage, but everything is back up and running great now, and apart from yesterday, we've been very happy with that new software. Our CADA GO service area has expanded really about 50% over the last couple of years, and will be expanding to cover virtually all of the center region by the end of the year or early into next year. And our on-time performance for that service remains above 95%. So very happy with stabilizing the service over the last couple of years. Next slide, please. We also took a hard look at balancing our budget and our financial situation. We developed a new local match formula, and we thank you all very much for working with us since Centris in particular. It was a lot of work with the managers to come up with a new formula that we thought fairly and predictably could determine what the match requirements were for our state and federal funding. We've also looked at our other revenue sources. We've improved our contract revenue sources from apartment complexes by more than 15% over the last couple of years. And we expanded the availability of our apartment passes. Now, instead of just riding from your apartment to campus, you can use the pass to go anywhere in the system, and that's also led to an increase in ridership. We've renegotiated our contracts with our friends at Penn State and got their reimbursement percentages where we think it's fair. We're very happy and appreciative with them. We've also increased our advertising rates and increased our revenue from our advertising on our buses. That's actually become a fairly significant source of revenue over the last few years. And unfortunately, we did have to work with our friends in Bellefonte, Veteran, and Spring Township on those services. We tried to get them to increase their reimbursement percentages, and because they were unwilling to do that, we had to cut those services back. Probably my saddest moment at CADA, you don't go in this business to cut services, you go in this business to expand them. But it was a necessary move for us financially, and really because of that, we were able to balance our budget, because we weren't having to over-subsidize services that weren't being supported well enough. We've implemented a new fare collection system this past August, our token transit service, that's working very well. Customers and operators alike are happy with it, and I think this month or early next month, you'll be able to pay with a credit card whenever you board the bus. Just tap it on the reader like you do at the sheets, and you won't even need to buy a pass. And this year, we also have a close-to-balance budget. It's recording a slight deficit, but that's assuming that we're going to be hiring 10 new drivers, which we don't think we're going to be able to hire, so we'll probably finish the year with a surplus. So our financial situation is very stable. Really because of that, the fact that we have no state budget and that the federal government is closed, has no immediate impact on us. We have cash reserves that are ample to support us for a number of months if necessary. And lastly, next slide, please. We worked really hard to strengthen our workforce. We negotiated a new labor contract with our bus operators and our mechanics that they were very happy with and easily passed. We've recruited a new CEO for the organization and added a lot of new members to our executive team. We implemented a new, some new internal things that really have helped, a new system to manage our payroll and our human resources functions. We're enhancing our training programs for operators and staff. And last month, we initiated something called the Catalyst Award. This is an award where we are recognizing employees who have come forward with transformative ideas that have really helped the transit system. The people who got the award this past year were the team who did the route redesign process. We really wanted to create a culture, or start to create a culture, of encouraging people at all levels in the organization to come forward with their ideas, to contribute and, you know, try to have an organization where the leadership reaches throughout the organization for good ideas, and we nurture creativity and problem-solving at every level. We've also enhanced our cybersecurity, actually considering yesterday, I'm very happy that we did that, because in addition to putting things in the cloud, we also have a backup system that is running continuously in Lancaster, Pennsylvania, in their emergency operations center. So should our systems go down here, we have a redundant system in Lancaster that we can tie into as needed, so we won't go down. And we've really worked hard to expand our connections with you folks. CADA, I don't think was listening as much as we needed to, and hopefully you feel now that we are. We really want to maintain that engagement. That's improved our ability to deliver good services to you, and we are going to continue that into the future. So CADA today, as we turn things over to Todd, we remain the most efficient transit system in Pennsylvania, the most cost-effective transit system. Our closest competitor is SEPTA. We recover about 40% of our costs, cover our operations at SEPTA, theirs is 15%. So we are in really good shape financially. We've reached our highest ridership since 2020, we're back to 5 million rides, which is the first time that's happened since before the pandemic, so we're very happy to report that milestone. We are covering the region with bus and micro-transit service. The region remains, this is something I learned since I got here, we're in the top 10 communities in the country for passengers using transit to get to work. So very good distinction for the center region. We not only use CNG, but now we switch to renewable natural gas. We not only use CNG, but now we switched to renewable natural gas, so we're green, and we're even greener now. And our passenger satisfaction from our latest survey was 90%, according to PennDOT. So, hopefully, we're heading in the right direction. And I want to thank all of you for your support of CADA. You've been great over the last couple of years. I've enjoyed working with you, and I'll be bidding you a farewell after this. This is my last meeting, and now I'll introduce Todd to tell you where he's going to take things.
So, hello, everybody. As David said, I'm Todd Horsley, and I'm the incoming CEO at CADA, and happy to be here. I've met several of the staff. I don't think I've met any of the board members yet, so I'm happy to meet you and look forward to working with you over the, hopefully, the next few years. And so, on the slide, you see just kind of a brief, my background, a kind of a brief overview of my background. I won't recite my resume, but we'll let you know. I'm originally from Alabama, grew up there. I went to Auburn University, and I actually started my career as an economic development planner, so our friends have left, but I actually used to work in their world, but that was many years ago, so it's changed, changed dramatically since then. But for the last 25 years, I've really been in the public transportation industry, and you can see kind of the places that I've been and where I've worked. Started out kind of ground level at the Go Triangle system in Raleigh-Durham, North Carolina. It's in the Research Triangle. It's kind of a system that if you, Raleigh-Durham, Chapel Hill, have their own systems, but if you want to go between one of those cities, you have to take basically the Go Triangle system if you want to do that by public transportation. So, I actually got there when it was a very small, new organization. They had the bus system in place, but they were, I call it a small organization with big dreams. They had a dream of a regional rail system that they wanted to build in the Research Triangle. And so, I was kind of brought in to be their contracts and grants administrator. I was the first person in that position. I handled all, I was really thrown into the fire, basically just given some manuals and said, read these and figure this out for us. And so, started out as a contracts and grants administrator, handled all their grant administration with the state and federal government, all their purchasing, procurement, contracting. Also, over the seven years I was there, I also became, at some point, I was the facilities manager, I became the risk manager at some point, I was actually the HR director or HR manager for a couple of months while there was a vacancy there. So, really learned from the ground up at Triangle, at what was then Triangle Transit Authority, now called Go Triangle. I moved on to Georgia Regional Transportation Authority in Atlanta, and this is actually an authority of the state of Georgia, but it operates the commuter bus service from, in the metroplots in Atlanta area, so 13 counties, basically the people that come in by transit in the morning and go back out in the evenings. And so, did a lot of the same stuff I was doing at Go Triangle. I was their contracts and compliance director, so I handled all of their interactions with the FTA, all of their contracts and grants, and all of their federal compliance work. I was a little bit more removed from operations at Greta than I was at Go Triangle, and so really wanted to get back into that. And there was an opportunity out in Colorado that I didn't think I had a shot at getting, but I became the chief operating officer, the first chief operating officer at the Roaring Fort Transit, Transportation Authority out in the Aspen area in Colorado. Basically, I was brought out there because I had some FTA experience, and they were getting ready to build the first rural bus rapid transit system in the nation. And so, during my four years there, we actually finished the planning and design, we constructed it, and actually got it under operation while I was there, and that's one of the highlights of my career. So, it's called the Velociraptor. It's got one of the coolest branding, if you've ever seen it, it's a kind of a dinosaur theme, but, you know, very proud of that. And I was also, as the chief operating officer, I was really kind of the deputy CEO, so managed a lot of the disparate functions out there at RRAFTA. And stayed there for four years, had not planned to leave. I had planned to be the CEO at RRAFTA right by now, but unfortunately, life kind of interferes sometimes, and my dad got sick, and so I needed to move back east, and all my family's still in Alabama, and so I was just looking for an opportunity back on the East Coast. I landed at Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation. It was another state job. When I left Georgia, I said, I will never work for the state again. I don't want to spend a state job. But landed there thinking I would be there a couple of years, and then I would figure it out, but actually, I was the director of Northern Virginia Transit Programs in Virginia. And so, I was living in the Washington DC area. It's one of the most transit-rich regions in the nation, and it was a fascinating job. I worked there, ended up staying for 10 years, and so had not planned to do that. And but after 10 years, I realized that if I ever really wanted to get back into provision of transit service, I got to do it now or never, because my runway of my career is not near as long as it has been in the past. So, the thing about it is I love working at DRPT, could have retired from DRPT in Virginia, but, you know, that afforded me the opportunity to look at opportunities, you know, to be very selective in the opportunities that I pursued. And I really only pursued a couple, and ended up here at CADA as the incoming CEO, and very happy to be here. So, that's kind of my backstory. If you want to go to the next slide. Let's have a couple of slides. I want to just talk about things that are kind of going on right now, that'd be our immediate focus, and then the next slide will be about future, what maybe you see in the nearer term, in the future. But as far as what will probably consume my time, or a lot of my time, right after we take over in November, these are some of the things that have already been approved, some projects and initiatives that have already been approved, and will take some of my time for the rest of this fiscal year. We have a new, we're going to be embarking on a new CADA strategic plan. The last time CADA updated its strategic plan was 2016, and it's just kind of, at this point, it's a irrelevant document, and so we need to do a new strategic plan. And I think the board was wise to wait until there was a leadership change. Actually, David is going to stay on and assist us with that. His contract still runs for a few more months after I become the CEO, so he'll help us, guide us through the strategic planning process, probably starting in December, January, and through the spring. So, that will take up some more time. That will really help me and the board focus on what I really want to do for the future and what we need to do for the future. But operator recruitment and retention, this is something that's ongoing. It's not just a one-year thing, but it's something that we are constantly working to improve and we're struggling with. And it's really an industry-wide struggle. It's not a CADA struggle, but it's just struggling to have enough operators to operate your system and then retain those operators and not have them get their CDL and then go work for a private sector company for more money, you know, later in the future. So, that is something that we'll be focusing on. You know, we tend to have pretty much just enough drivers to get our service on the street every day, maybe with one or two extras. It would be really nice if we had a few more extras, so that if we had a few sick outs in one day, it doesn't make us start scrambling to try to figure out how we're going to meet our service for that day. So, that's kind of one of the challenges that we'll be tackling also in the next fiscal year and beyond. David mentioned the bus stop accessibility study. So, Phase 1 has been done. That's basically an inventory of all the bus stops in the system. So, the second phase is just getting kicked off, and that's going to be a prioritization project where we look at all of the bus stops, try to figure out the ones that are in most need of repair or upgrade, especially if there's some compliance issues on some of the federal laws. So, we'll be prioritizing those, and as David said, we'll probably be coming back to you in our, when we come back in our budget presentation in the spring, and hopefully we'll have some bus stops in Ferguson, if there are any, and we'll be able to tell you what we're looking at there in Ferguson. CADA facility improvements, I mention these because these are going to start probably in the next few months. These are, neither of these are major projects really, but they are going to affect our facility right across the street, so you may see some construction activity over there. There is a bus stop, a parking garage renovation project. It's really a repair project. The parking garage is just kind of at that age where it's starting to show some deterioration. We want to get on top of some of the maintenance that needs to be done. So, that'll be going on through the spring, and then we also have an office built out on our third floor. It's not an expansion of the facility. We just have a big room, probably about the size of this room, it's just never been built out with offices, and we're going to do that over the spring. And so, that's just going to be, both of these are going to be going on. We're kind of in the space where all of our employees are, so it's going to be, you know, a little bit of a juggling act to manage those projects. Then, we have a couple of new potential new services that we may be looking to launch sometime in this fiscal year or maybe beyond, or at least start the planning for them. The board, we put in the budget some funding to possibly get a new service maybe to the State College Regional Airport. This would probably be an on-demand service. It wouldn't be a CADA bus fixed route, but it would be an expansion of our on-demand CADA go service. And so, we want to be thoughtful as to how do we do that, and so that's something that we're going to be planning and probably starting pretty quickly. Something else that could happen in this fiscal year, but maybe it's just more of planning, and it comes about in a future fiscal year, maybe next year, is we're looking at some possible service to the regional Amtrak stations. Again, this would be an on-demand service. It would not be a fixed route to the Amtrak stations, but, you know, Tyrone and Lewiston are the two closest ones. Those are really just platforms, though, and so we're trying to figure out, does it make sense to have a demand service to either of those? It might make more sense to just go to Altoona, because there's actually a station there with secure parking and a shelter, you know, and a building where people can wait. So, anyway, that's just the kind of things we're going to be looking at demand, and if there's a demand for that. And we have someone who's going to be on the steering committee for the rail access study that the COD is undertaking, so we're also going to be tuned into that study as well. And then, CADA next, so this is kind of something we're still trying to formulate and trying to figure out what our actual, you know, what we want to do with this and how we want to make sure it's a, you know, a good program. But this is a, it's a program that actually Rod DeMeo, who's your Ferguson representative on our board, he's going to help us facilitate this, but this is an initiative that the board initiated. They want to hear from CADA employees about innovative things that are going on in the transit industry that, you know, CADA may take a look at and it might work in State College. And so, this is envisioned to be a group of CADA employees from our rank and file, not from our management ranks, but people who, you know, work in the industry, out on the street every day, and we want to get them together and see if they can come up with some ideas for possible innovative things that CADA could do in the future. I've heard that CADA used to be known for innovation. I think we're still an innovative organization, but I think the pandemic kind of scrambled everything, and so we want to kind of get our swagger back as far as innovation goes. And so, I think Rod and this group that we're putting together will help us do that. All right, you can go to the next slide. And then, the last slide here is just kind of, I've talked about my past and kind of what we're doing in the present. It's just kind of the future as, you know, coming in, just trying to figure out, you know, I was often asked, what do I want, what do I want CADA to be? So, I sat down and thought about it, and I came up with these six things. After I put them down on paper, I thought, well, these are really six things that any public sector organization or transit agency should aspire to be, so there's nothing really new or revolutionary here. And I would also say it's really nine, because these six, plus it's the three things that David started out with. So, we're going to continue to improve our services, we're going to continue to enhance our revenue, or try to enhance our revenues, and we're going to continue to strengthen our organization and workforce. So, it's those three things, plus these six, that I've kind of added myself. You know, the first one is a safety-first culture. Any transit CEO in the nation should say, safety is our first priority. That's kind of been beaten into everyone's heads as a transit CEO, and it should be. But we want it to be, but we want to, we don't want it to be just lip service. We want it to actually be, you know, something that we don't get complacent with, and we actually, we actually live that. It becomes a core value that just kind of permeates the entire organization. So, we want to have a safety-first culture. We want to provide excellent customer service. So, let me back up. I don't really think CADA already does these things pretty well, so we just want to improve on them and just kind of, you know, make our organization better. But I think we already, you know, provide excellent customer service. We want to continue to do that. We want to be responsive to customer complaints. We want to, you know, we want our buses to be clean. We want to get you where you need to go, when you need to be there. We just want you to have an enjoyable ride, and so we want it to be, we just want to be known for our excellent customer service. We want to be an employer of choice in the region. I'm new to the region, so I think CADA is already viewed as a nice place to work, but I want us to be viewed as one of the great places to work in the region that we could have. And I want that to be, you know, we have kind of the happiest employees in the valley. You know, that's kind of my goal there. You know, our work, and this is not just, you know, great benefits and, you know, great, you know, great schedules and things like that, but, you know, our operators, our customer service attendants, our dispatchers, anybody who's front-facing with the public, they have very stressful jobs already, and they will continue to be stressful, but CADA as an organization does not need to be a source of that stress, so I want CADA to be a supportive organization, understand that they, you know, they have stressful jobs and that we want to be, you know, as supportive as we can be. And I want our employees to be able to go home at night and be proud of where they work and the jobs that they do. Trusted community partner, David kind of touched on this. We have five member municipalities that we are, those are our members, and we want to be a trusted community partner with them, as well as Penn State and Center County and any other organizations that we work with. There's a saying, I always mix it up, that, you know, you should do projects with the community and not to the community. And so, I want CADA to be known for doing CADA projects with the community and not to the community. And I also would like for us to be, be known for doing transit with Ferguson Township and not to Ferguson Township, so we just want to be a trusted community partner. You know, an organization that works, what I'm going for here is just an organ, you know, we want CADA to be recognized as a great place to work. We want CADA to be recognized as a community, as a great community asset, but I also kind of want us to be an afterthought. I don't want CADA to be a pain point in anyone's day. I just want CADA to work. I just want people who take transit, they get on the bus, the fare box works, the bus gets to where they need to go, the app works that tells you when the next bus is going to be there. It's not a pain point in anyone's day. It's just, it's just an organization that works. So, you know, so, I think I've written, trying to, you know, we're just, we want to, our equipment's going to work, our schedules are going to work, you know, we're just going to be a responsive organization, we're going to pay our bills on time. We just want to be an organization that works, and that nobody has to think about, you know, CADA not being somewhere that works well. And then, finally, an innovative spirit, and I kind of talked about this with the CataGo program, but, you know, we just want to get that swagger back as far as innovation goes. And we want to be, you know, willing to try new things, and to, if you're willing to try new things, then you've got to be willing to fail and to acknowledge that you've tried new things, and that maybe that didn't work. But we want to be innovative, and we want to empower our employees to introduce ideas and to help solve problems. So, those are the six things, like I said, that I kind of came up with. Our strategic planning process that we're about to kick off will probably help me to hone these a little bit. I know these are very aspirational, and so you'll be hearing more about it the next, probably the next time here in the spring, talking with you about our budget. So, happy to answer any questions, and I have my phone a friend in the audience if I get.
Any questions?
And we will be back, you know, in the spring and anytime you need it, so we meet with Centris every month, and so, we're literally across the street. Come see us.
Mr. Heller.
Yes, and I just want to say first off, Todd, welcome to the Center Region, welcome to Ferguson, welcome to CADA, and thank you so much for the presentation this evening. And also, I want to say, David, thank you so much for all that you've done for CADA and really fostering the community engagement. Historically, we've seen wonderful things through CADA when earlier, Todd, and I'm sure you'll be hearing more about this in case you haven't already, there was issues with, or concerns from the community about closing certain bus stops, and the community members came out, and through David's leadership and the leadership of CADA, a resolution was met. So, I applaud that effort, and I look forward to more of them. And Todd, with these future focuses, these six items that you have there, I'm looking forward to seeing how the strategic plan aligns to them. So, truly welcome. And I do want to ask a clarifying question, and this is actually, I got really excited. Did I hear something about essentially what I would call a tap-and-ride feature, where you just walk in, tap your credit card, and you've paid your fare, and off you go?
Yeah, that is correct. Token Transit should be implementing that this fall. Probably, I'm going to say November, I'm not going to promise October, but we think it's probably going to be November, so.
That is wonderful. That's exciting, and I guess my question is, does that also expand to the game day shuttle?
Yes, it will be all our services.
Ah, okay. I know a lot of folks that would be very happy to hear that. I applaud the effort and everything around that, so that's wonderful news. So, again, Todd, welcome, and David, thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Patterson.
Well, that's all the thank yous. I won't say any more of those. But a couple of things that came to mind just during this presentation. Number one, there was a mention of there was some potential of hiring 10 more drivers. What was the thinking around that? Was that some sort of increase in ridership?
So, well, as I said, we, you know, we have enough drivers to put our service out on the street every day, and we have maybe, you know, a couple of extra, but if we have any... And we have maybe a, you know, a couple of extra, but if we have any significant, you know, callouts of people being sick, then we kind of have to struggle that morning to, to fill, to fill shifts and to, to get our service on the street. So it'd just be nice to have some extra drivers for that. But we're also going to need drivers if we're ever going to expand our services in any way. And while there are no major service expansions right now on CADA bus, you know, that even prevents us from just adding additional service into the, into the routes that we have. So, so that's really the two things. It's really to just kind of shore up our extra board for services, you know, on a daily basis. But also, like I said, if we want to, you know, run any or increase our frequencies or add any, any service, we're going to need additional drivers.
Copy that. I didn't see any hard numbers, but there was a, a mention of the change in the, in the local match formula, which was, I saw more predictable because of the number of, based on population and not, you know, these other things that were a little more amorphous. What did that mean for Ferguson's contribution? Did that go up?
I'm going to look at David on this one to see.
Yeah.
It was, so I don't know if you can hear me.
I can hear you.
Okay, so I think the, it was fairly neutral. I'd have to look at the numbers myself, but somewhat up, somewhat down. I think Ferguson's kind of defer to set a tree saw test.
Our operational cost, and so it largely goes into the formula of what our percentage is for operations cost. So I would say a very minor dollar amount, but the, the formula is that the municipalities pay, I believe, 5% of the operational cost.
It's a little bit more than that, but yeah.
Right, yes, maybe.
And it's.
It goes up 5% when we haven't met the 15%. Yeah, the total is 15%. So there is an impact for those 10 drivers. I don't know what the salary would be. I would consider it to be potentially minor, but I wouldn't know what that actual dollar amount is without the calculation.
Well, for the, if I, if I don't mind, for the additional drivers, that's budgeted. So that's covered in our budget. As Todd was saying, we've got some areas where we'd love to add some more service. One of them is the R on Wapalani Drive. We are, we've got a couple of routes. Our redesign was so successful that we're now having capacity issues, that we have a lot of people who want to ride and we'd like to add some more service.
Right. And I, and I would also note too, I don't know how your organization responds to the overtime costs that you end up having to pay when you don't have those additional part-time or full-time drivers to lean into when PTO is being utilized. So I often find depending on what that point looks like, when it pays the organization to bring in new hires to offset the overtime and other related expenditures.
Yes, that was actually a major objective of the route redesign because we had huge amounts of overtime in '23 and into '24. And the redesign was kind of designed to match the driving force that we had, so that we would not have that overtime. So now our overtime costs, except for football weekends, are fairly low.
That's all from me. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, just welcome. Thanks for coming tonight and thanks for all that you've done as interim. It's much, much appreciated. So thank you.
Yeah, I, I just extend my thanks as well. You know, I, I've, I've said this to Dave again, but you know, personally, I kind of feel like Uber prices are somewhat inflated as of late. So having good public transportation, even where places I go to visit is very cost-effective, you know, for, for my, my wife and I. I had an interesting number from our library report recently. They said like on the first day of their reading program, there was over like a thousand kids that went through the library and it occurred to me, this was the first year all the kids also got a bus pass for the system. Not sure if you could correlate the two, but the kids got there and you know, that's a good thing. And you know, they did have that option if, if they wanted to visit the library this year. So yeah, just keep, keep up the good work.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Patterson, did you forget to put your hand down or are you, were you finished?
I'm still stretching.
Oh, you're still stretching. Okay, okay. A virtual stretch. All right, next up, we have the Center Region Parks and Recreation Authority Report presented by Corey Gracie Griffin.
Good, good evening, everyone. My apologies for my report getting into your agendas late, but it is there now. I provided a brief summary of the meetings that, highlights really of the meetings that we've had since my last report. I think the overall theme of the last few months of our meetings, Director Christie Owens has been pushing for updating our policies and procedures, which I think has been a good thing. And so there's been quite a bit of discussion over the last few meetings about our fee policies, about our field use and reservation policies, mostly to update those things because they have not been updated in a long time, make minor changes and edits. No, no major changes in any of those documents, but just getting them up to speed with where our facilities are currently. And that's led to some interesting conversations along the way as we've gone through those things. I think in terms of the things that I want to bring up with you all today, again, I, anytime I see the boardwalk mentioned or brought up as a piece of conversation during, from Millbrook Marsh, I try to note that. I think you all have had a chance to see what is now, I don't want to get the name right, now called our Strategic Guide to Services Investments, which we used to talk about as the CIP when I was a supervisor. You will note that there was money set aside in there for planning for the boardwalk and then even some initial costs for a first phase. That is up to the cog to decide. And so I leave that all in your hands, but I just wanted to make a note of that as it goes forward. I think one of the interesting things that has come up is more conversations. I think last time I was here, we, or the time before that, we talked about the bathrooms at Hess and the particular plans there. In the meantime, the old master plan for Hess was brought back before us at the authority because although there was an initial sort of approval for it in 2022, it got lost in a sort of limbo as focus shifted to Whitehall and then we were in between directors to the point where it was not actually officially approved as a master plan. Without that, the authority can, and the staff cannot seek grants, for example, for improvements to Hess. And so we remedied that by approving that previous master plan, which would actually decrease the number of fields at Hess to three, but make those fields more flexible for both the sports that are played on them, beyond even baseball. They could be used for other field sports because they would be large enough to do that. There were, of course, concerns that came up during that conversation that that master plan was quite old already when it was approved and might not address all of the issues or opportunities that Hess has for us in the future. We were, Director Owens assured us that we can make changes to that plan as we move forward, that we were not locking anything into stone by approving that plan, but that we could make changes as we move forward. But because of, you know, pending things like wanting to improve the bathrooms, it would be nice to be able to apply for grants if they were available and they could not do that without having some sort of master plan. So wanted to make you all aware of that because then that ties into yet another item that was in the SG, SGSI, which was dealing with the lighting situation at Hess. The existing lights are, need to come down because they are falling apart and could be seen as a danger. And so if you, I don't know if you looked at that carefully when you were reviewing it, but there were several options there that ranged from $5,000 to $300,000 to replace and install new lights. I think there needs to be some talk about how that works with the new master plan we just approved. But again, whenever I see something that is of high cost regarding the regional parks, I want to bring it to your attention if it hasn't already been put there. And I think, I think those are the major things. Of course, we had the grand opening of Whitehall Regional Park since my last report, which is very exciting. On a personal note, my son actually played in the flag football program for the first time this year. And the fields were a delight to use for that particular program, which I will note had record participation this year as well. So that was exciting. Yeah, I think the last thing in our last meeting, you know, there's an interesting conversation. Again, we're looking at policies and procedures. And so while we approved our use fees for this year, we also looked to adopting policies for those fees going forward. One of those conversation pieces that we had there had to do with enacting a multiplier for fees that we charge non-residents to use our facilities and our programs. Right now, that policy shows a 1.5 multiplier for those things. A lot of questions were brought up. Does, is that actually the right multiplier to be using? Given that all of the residents also pay into our regional park system through our taxes and through the township's contributions to the cog. And I think one of the things that prompted is previous conversations that we've had about better understanding residency in terms of who is using our parks, who's using our facilities, who, who are paying these fees. And I think I got a tiny bit of traction there in talking about this issue with the director. So that was good. With that, I'm happy to take any questions, comments that you might have for me to take back to the authority.
Mr. Patterson is recognized.
Good evening. Thanks so much for this report. Just wanted to get a little bit more, or maybe perhaps you can expand a little bit more on the user fee discussion there. It sounds, if I'm hearing correctly, it sounds as if there's, it isn't clear across parks operating who's, who's using the facility. But a 1.5 is a start, I guess. Is that kind of what I'm understanding here of that user fee change?
That is correct. And I think it depends, it depends on the activity. For example, we have really good numbers for the active adult center about residency and not. We need those things because the county actually contributes to that particular program. So that county and that particular program, county residents are considered, have to get to pay resident fees. And so it's really only out of county who are not. And so consequently, we, the authority, the staff keeps better track of that. One of the things that is, was in the SGSI were requests for new software in order, and some of that is registration software, which I'm also hoping will help then track this residency requirement as well.
Copy that. Can, can you give us a little bit more on the, I guess with that active adult, I mean, do they have a breakdown as to how much of like the parks operating is included in the active adult maintenance, like percentage wise or anything like that?
Uh, yes, I do not have those numbers in front of me, however.
Okay, don't worry. That, that'll be a good discussion later, but, but I, I'll just, you know, kind of tee it up here. Is that, you know, our parks operating is going to be a $600,000 contribution and, you know, rough estimate 10,000 homes in the township, that's about $60 per family. So that, that's interesting that, you know, the one and a half is, okay, that's, that's a good start. But if, okay, we're talking about the pool where it's, let's just say it's $6 to get in and somebody else is paying nine. So that delta's $3 and somebody has to, you know, a non-resident has to go to the pool 20 times to make up the, the the $60 that I, that, you know, that, that residents pay initially.
Yes, I, I made a very similar argument when we were talking about the fee policy. And that without knowing the numbers, it becomes very hard to say is 1.5 the right multiplier in order to offset that $60 per household that you were just speaking of.
Yeah. No, thank you. I, I think the, oh, I just found it. So the 2024, looks like they're estimating about $250,000 municipal dollars. So if we break that up into Ferguson share. Um, there's, there's a number per household. Let me get sure of the. All right, I can't do that math fast enough. 25% roughly.
Yeah, yeah. And I, and I, I mean, it's, I continue to push for more data about the users of our authorities. Programs is probably the easiest thing that we can get, you know, when it comes to the actual use of the parks, of course, that is a little more complicated.
Excellent. And then, so the flag football, what are the hours of, of that flag football? Right after school or is it nighttime? What's the?
Uh, the, the flag football program is now over. It just ended on Sunday. It was from 6:00 PM to 7:30 Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then games on Sunday afternoons broken down by age group on the, on the fourth, on the four main fields. One of the things that all the parents really appreciated who had participated in the program previously when it was held out at Oak Hall was that there are lights. And so previously, as the fall went on, that the times of the practices had to get earlier in the evening and that was hard for some families to get their kids there by 5:30 or 5:00. And so that was a real highlight. I heard from, this is my, my son's first year participating, but I heard from the other parents that they really appreciated the ability for the slot to stay at 6:00 to 7:30 and use the lights at Whitehall.
I'd agree. And then I think we want to ask us to just understand, you know, that the priority and order of operations, just in, in who uses the field. If there's, you know, an understanding, my understanding is that it's, you know, internal programs first for youth and then internal programs, everything else. And then there's kind of a youth private programs and then adult private, private programs, if that were, and you can correct me if I'm off there. But I'd love to know, is CRPR maximizing the, so that private number? So organizations that are coming in willing to pay the $150 an hour for, or per use of field time or whatever that, that number is, are, is CRPR looking to maximize that? You know, or maybe there's some sort of, you know, where you're, the, the folks that are coming to rent that field, where are you from? I know softball gets people from all over the state, quite frankly, coming in, you know, the surrounding counties coming in to play softball here. And so, you know, you know, where, where can we, you know, maximize the, the cost to organizations that have non-residents in their, in that usage? Just thinking through that, but something, the soft out there.
Yes. And so I think that is, those are some of the updates that were made, both to the use and the fee policies. There's now a three-tiered system in terms, that's based, that's based on cost recovery that focuses on both. There's two parts to it. One is who benefits from the programming, from a community down to an individual level. There's three tiers there. There is also a residency, non-residency cost. So if 51% of the participants are within the municipalities that support CRPR, then that's considered a resident program. If it's less than that, then it's considered a non-resident program. So yes, when we have a tournament, like a baseball tournament or softball tournament where people are coming from out of the area, they do have to pay a higher fee. To your question, is Parks and Rec trying to maximize that revenue from those out of? To your question, is Parks and Rec trying to maximize that revenue from those out of, let's say, non-residents? That is a question I can bring back and ask during a future meeting. I don't know that we have talked about that specific topic. We have discussed, particularly when the conversation came about the Hess master plan as well as other facilities, are we making the right investments to maximize use and revenue? Has been a point of conversation. For example, all of our fields are, all of our baseball and softball fields are dirt and grass, which means if there is a weather event, it is very likely that a tournament, whole tournament will be canceled on a weekend, whereas other municipalities that I personally travel to quite frequently, given my son's interest in baseball, they are moving to installing artificial turf fields, so that a single rain event does not cancel a whole tournament, and then they're able to schedule more tournaments then because of that. So we've had conversations that are more on the capital investment side and how we make future decisions about that to increase use of our facilities, but we have not had a conversation yet about things that the staff are doing to try right now to increase revenue from non-resident programs. And I'm happy to ask that question and come back and report to you guys.
Awesome, thank you. That's all from you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any other board members?
Just a couple.
Yes, Ms. Strickland.
Thanks very much, and thanks for all the summaries of the different meetings. That's really helpful. So I just wanted to say, on the boardwalk, I just wanted to mention that in the past discussions we had had here, we did talk as well about just alternatives to a boardwalk. So I just wanted to mention that as it comes up in conversation, we were saying, you know, what if it just makes more sense to have viewing spots, you know, given the conditions there and how difficult and expensive we know it'll be to construct? So wanted to make sure you'd gotten that from the discussions we had had here. On the multiplier, we have been told before previously too, just how difficult it is, particularly at the pools, to establish, because they're just taking money, you know, the people checking them, and they say, are you resident or non-resident, you know, so it's not a registration system, so that's always going to be a little bit tricky at the pools. With the multiplier, is that similar to what was used before, or how were those resident, non-resident fees established?
Previously, that I don't have an answer to.
Okay.
And again, I think a lot of the work that the staff is doing currently to come up with these nose policies is that they are looking to other regional park systems and looking at best practices. That is where I'm told the 1.5 number came from, if I remember right.
Yeah, I couldn't tell if it was...
Yeah, based on past practice, or if it was something new. It's, it is close to what is currently implemented.
Okay, that's what it seemed like, just knowing, you know, knowing with the resident or not. So I think this is about what we have.
Yeah.
Is that your...
That is my understanding as well.
Understanding, okay, so this won't be very different, but at least still give a baseline, I guess.
I think, yeah, I think what I appreciate about it is that it gives us a starting point to then, you know, decide, well, should that multiplier be higher, right? If we, if we so decide, if we think that that's the best way forward. Rather than previously, without this policy, we were just tweaking individual fees, right? And that we would, the authority in my first year would just vote on this huge list of fees, some would change, some wouldn't from year to year. Mostly, my understanding was based on operating costs going up, right, to try to match what was in the budget for the operating costs. But I think that, you know, getting to the heart of what I am, what I, what I was concerned about when I was a supervisor, and what I hear you all are concerned about, is that is the largest share payer of our regional park system, are our residents getting their value out of the money that we are putting into the regional park system? And making sure that we, and the corollary is that we are not being, that we are not overpaying, right, for what our residents are getting out of the regional park system.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to make sure we weren't going to expect less revenue based on...
Yeah, no, 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 that multiplier isn't going to reduce current revenues.
And then, oh, the Hess bathrooms, I'll mention it when I get to my research report, but just, you know, to make sure that communication flow is there between us and you, the authority. We did have some discussion here, we had some discussion at Lucy. They're actually going to send it back to the municipalities to discuss again. So, you know, we'll, I'll present this, and we'll talk about it, because there wasn't any really clear next steps. I think it's just being sent back to the municipalities for discussion. I think what we got out of that discussion is it's a long road moving forward.
Yes, yeah, you know, except for the temporary solutions, the longer term solution is complicated.
I apologize, whoever was speaking, I couldn't hear, so I don't know the question that you just answered, Mr. Gracie Griffin.
We do have, he can't hear me now. We are having technical difficulties. I was going to try to at least wrap this up and then maybe recess to allow troubleshooting.
I'm sorry, and I apologize to interrupt, but I don't know, Chair Thompson, I can see you're speaking, but we're not hearing anything.
Yeah, I think my microphone, my microphone seems to be the only one that is working currently, and so the, unfortunately, the supervisors' microphones are not working.
Okay, I would imagine they were just singing praises of you. We can pretty much invent anything at this point, so, awesome, thank you. Just wanted to recognize that. Sorry to interrupt, but wanted to make you aware.
Yeah, I think Supervisor Strickland was finishing up her questions, which mostly had to do with the new fee policy and the multiplier in there. So I think I answered most of those questions.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Last thing I'll say, if we'll have it, you'll hear it on the Hess bathroom.
Ah, yes.
So whenever that happens, you'll hear what that...
Okay, yeah, and then I'll repeat, just for the audience, Supervisor Strickland also mentioned that there's been conversation in Lucy and other committees about the Hess bathroom situation, and so she will provide an update there when it gets to that report.
I'm loving the running commentary. This is actually, you know, interesting to see motion.
I could, I could narrate, I can just stand up here and narrate the whole meeting if that is, if that's so desired, although it might get a little tiresome.
And now Assistant Manager Progar has left the room, and, ah, sorry, I'll, I'll have to find some humor sometime, so thank you.
All right. Chairman Thompson, can I repeat anything for you?
I was just going to say, any other questions for Cory?
Just thank you, and my points were all at Lisa had already mentioned, so we'll save the, save the having to repeat it.
Okay, there are summary, no other questions.
I was going to say, it almost does sound like if we speak up enough, something that Mr. Keo reminds me of, our online audience can at least hear us through this, so, yeah, nothing further through the board, I think we're good to recess and give staff some time to sort this out.
All right, for those online, we're going to recess.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. But, okay.
Things looking good on CNAT's end for back and forth? Okay. I will call the Board of Supervisors meeting back to order. Want to give many thanks to Todd Faustone, our IT Director, who came in on their evening off to get us back online, as well as to all the staff. I was going to say, everyone was frantically trying to get us back online after our audio had cut out. So, for those that were watch online, we were just taking questions from the board on the Parks and Recreation Authority report. So, we do apologize that you weren't able to get that last bit of audio there. To keep us moving along, we'll go with our COG and Regional Committee reports. Did facilities have anything to present to us? I believe that was Mr. Patterson. Do you hear us?
Shall we skip and go back?
Yeah, I'm going to try to keep this moving there. And I do appreciate everyone that has been in attendance here for bearing with us. Land use and community infrastructure in the Center Region Planning Commission Joint Meeting?
Yes, this is our joint meeting. And the CRPC had a couple of items they took action on. Both were in Harris Township, their short-term rental ordinance and their sign, an amendment to the sign ordinance. And Lucy Committee had a discussion on the public sewer access for Hess Field. And it was quite a broad, good discussion. I'll keep the details minimal here because it's coming back to us again. So, yeah, so in the end, we settled on three questions to send back to the municipalities to discuss this. If we think there should be an exemption for COG facilities. And should we amend the RGV SSA to define criteria process for parkland requested DRI? So, that was one of the questions. Pam Adams brought up the idea of incorporating any changes into an Act 537 update, which she anticipates within the next year or two. That seemed to make sense to everybody because that would allow a proposed expansion of the sewer service area to cover that area. And then, that property could apply for a DRI if we made some minor changes to the DRI process. So, that's kind of where that, it seemed like the majority was agreeing on that. Anyways, as I said, the Executive Committee will be sending this back to municipalities for discussion.
Climate Action Sustainability. If there was no questions for Ms. Strickland?
That's Matt, I believe.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm happy to jump into the Climate Action Sustainability. And just want to let you know, the government actions, a couple of different things. There were 35 actions that COG felt were managed and would be most appropriately brought back to the municipalities that are under municipal control, if, for lack of a better term. So, you'll see those sent back to the municipalities for more input prioritization, et cetera, and some more formal communication related to that. We also had a single-use plastic update. And in that, we're looking at some next steps. We're expecting more in 2026. And finally, a matching grant opportunity of just about $8,200 that they were asking folks on the committee for what should we use it for? One of the recommendations that I had was related to maybe clearer communication on what cardboard is recyclable? Because I know that has been a point of question from my constituents from history, not knowing what type of cardboard was recyclable and actually having been maybe provided notes or letters saying that what they've put in the recyclables is not recyclable. So, really, straightening out some language and helping folks know what's recyclable. So, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? If not, Public Safety Committee?
Good evening. Public Safety, the only, the biggest thing that happened in the last Public Safety Committee meeting was there was an increase in fee for rental housing application permits. I encourage you all to kind of just take a look at that, the night of the ad already or maybe the meeting. But, in summary, they're going to impose a $75 fee, application fee. The rationale was that there was some work upfront that had to go into it. And so, then, the renewal fee didn't quite cover it in that first year. So, I voted against it, you know, happy to talk more through it. But, it did pass to move on to the subsequent committees and general forum. So, I don't think the math works. I think it's, you know, bringing in more revenue to... It wasn't bringing more revenue to definitely or in any guaranteed way bring on more staff. I think the existing staff that handle the existing work. But, I think one comment was made was, well, Harris passed this new ordinance. And so, there's going to be 200 new applications. And they'll need to adjust for that in the coming months. All that for Public Safety.
Any questions? If not, Mr. Patterson, did you have any items for facilities you wanted to bring to our attention?
Facilities was a bunch of updates and discussions, so nothing outside the agenda. Happy to talk to anything.
There was two executive committees since we last had meetings, since we last had our reports. The only thing that I would say is, in today's meeting, there was some initial discussion of just discussing our committee structure moving forward. The item was brought forward by the College Township delegation. We are scheduling a work session, a special session of the Executive Committee next month before bringing that forward to General Forum. Everything's very preliminary right now, but I think there is going to be a lot of good ideas and options for the elected officials to explore. So, if no questions, yes, Mr. Heller?
Yes, just quickly about the Executive Committee. The summary budget, was that also presented today? I know we had moved it forward in Finance Committee. And I believe that was on tap for the Executive Committee today.
Yeah, we did have a discussion on that and moved it forward to General Forum.
Thank you, thank you. That was all.
All right, if nothing further, Mr. Heller, it looks like you have two Finance Committee reports to bring forward to us.
Oh, and I apologize. I was focusing on the one, the latest one about the summary budget and that it was moving forward. So, I appreciate kind of closing the loop on that one. And then, related to the, we did do our after-action report, a little bit of how everything went, you know, through this budget cycle. There was a note that COG staff was going to be looking at, really focusing on the calendar concerns that were raised around holidays and other things. So, we might see some changes in that going forward. And then, the fund balance policy update. It looks like we'll probably be using or having a December meeting to go ahead and dive a little bit deeper into some more fund balance policies. Specifically, we were talking about the code fund balance than the last time and really what to do with the excess fund balance, which I believe those excess fund balances are going to... That conversation will be at a future date because the conversation was usually around, are we going to be sending a check back to, for example, the municipalities? Or are we going to maybe consider crediting municipalities in the future around the fund balance? So, more conversations to happen in that space. Thank you, happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Heller? If not, we'll go to Patty for Parks and Recreation Governance Committee.
Nothing really more to report, other than the fact that, you know, I had stated our hope that this would come to solicitors and managers and back to the General Forum. And they wanted to really make sure that we understood that this process was, the whole reason to go through it was so that we aren't giving our solicitor more than, having to pay for a solicitor before everybody's had a chance to weigh in. So, this is just the process of getting the, into writing and into these documents, what is already happening, and then, the feedback from everybody. And so, we will see it again at General Forum or it will go to the managers and solicitors ultimately. But, we continue to work. That's it, we have our meeting tomorrow.
Mr. Heller?
My apologies, my hand was still up. I'm lowering it now.
Stretching?
He was just stretching. Anyone else had any questions? If not, we'll recognize the Township Manager to point out any highlights for the department reports.
Provided with the agenda is the department report. And happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions for the manager? Seeing none, we'll go to unfinished business, starting with the discussion on ordinance amendment or consideration to repeal Chapter 7, Part 2, fire hydrant. And I will recognize Township Manager.
Thank you, Chair. You may recall that on August 5th, the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting received an informational update regarding the utility style assessments and cost allocation methods within the township, including the fire hydrant cost. And following that discussion, the township had facility, had put out a survey to solicit feedback from our residents on this particular item, as well as two other areas of interest, and also hosted two public input sessions led by our Assistant Township Manager on September 18th and September 25th. And the township has, yeah, staff. We've reviewed all of the input. We have provided a recommendation for the board's consideration. The public input summary on the hydrant specifically is noted there in the agenda, as well as the survey findings. I think it's interesting, 77% were not, 77% of the residents were not aware of the hydrant assessments, which would, I guess, perhaps make sense, seeing as how the majority of our residents are not actually assessed a hydrant fee. I should note that the survey responses were approximately 340 of our residents that responded to that survey. And so, greater details on the surveys, as well as information summarized from those two public input sessions are within the Agenda Pocket included as attachments. If you would like to know more information about either of the two public forums that we've engaged residents through. And the cost sharing, 46% of our residents agreed that costs for hydrants, streetlights, and oak wilt, two of the items that we'll get further into as the agenda moves forward, believe that that cost should be shared more broadly. This evening, the board is asked to essentially give consideration to a potential amendment or repeal of Chapter 7, Part 2, fire hydrants. Essentially, we're looking to evaluate mechanisms for hydrant operation, maintenance, and fire, and provide direction to staff on a path forward. The board could consider retaining the existing ordinance, which we believe to be quite outdated and difficult to explain to those that inquire about the frontage that's currently in our existing ordinance and how those assessments are applied. The board could consider an amendment or repeal and replace. You may recall, as part of our budget discussions, we had discussed the potential option, following Terry Kunkel with DCD's presentation, a fire protection tax. That is the recommended option, that the board consider the option to move away from assessing a fire hydrant to a select number of residents based on, I believe it's a 780-foot frontage in proximity to the location of the hydrant. But, the board also could consider the other option, which is to keep the additional, keep the ordinance. And just to provide some clarification, the operational side of how that fire hydrant is assessed has created some interesting conversations at a staff level and certainly some concerns about the equitable approach to how we assess based on the current ordinance. There's a greater detail provided to the board. I trust that all of you have taken time to read through the agenda narrative that summarized there, provided in front of you. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, but I encourage the dialogue and, uh, the determination on how you'd like to proceed forward.
Okay, any questions for the manager? If there are no questions for the manager, I...
Chair, and I would just say too, um, if there aren't questions, I will say that, yes, we currently, the fire hydrant assess, the fire hydrants fund has a significant amount of revenue that's been collected over the years, and part of the inventory that we conducted to determine what the number of fire hydrants are that we're responsible for, actually yielded an observation that we were, uh, paying more to State College Borough Water Authority than we needed to by about approximately forty fire hydrants. And so we do have quite a bit of surplus in the fire hydrant fund, so if you moved away from assessing the fee to a select number of residents based on the current ordinance, my recommendation would be that we return those dollars back to the residents that paid in, because I don't know that the township would necessarily need to keep the revenue collected based on the, um, the previous, the previous ordinance, uh, if you decide to, to repeal and replace. I just wanted to acknowledge what the recommendation would be if we moved away from a fire hydrant fee and utilized more of a restricted fund on, uh, the, you know, utilizing in theory a fire height, or excuse me, a fire protection tax that would be applied to every resident, and would also be a restricted fund that would be utilized for the cog fire protection services payment as well. And with that, I will conclude.
Okay. If there are no questions, I would take a motion.
Mr. Chair, may, are you going to allow any public input?
I think I will, I, I'm not getting anything from, you know, the board, so, you know, def- definitely we welcome public input. I, I think we kind of need some time to, you know, just kind of hear, hear, hear some things out, so feel free to step forward.
Bill Keough, resident of Ferguson Township. The reference in the recommended motion that you all have in front of you is a special fire protection tax ordinance, uh, to be prepared by staff. Unrelated to my other comments about this, uh, will this be going before the Tax Review Board as well?
It would be up to the board if you'd like to send it in, in front of them. The Tax Review Board has a very specific charge, and one of the charge, the, the main charge is that the board will have, um, I don't have it, the language in front of me, but when there is a tax revenue plan in place by the board, it goes to the tax committee to review and provide comment and recommendation on. And currently, this, if the board wanted to pursue this, uh, model as a plan, this would certainly be something that would qualify to go in front of the Tax Review Board for consideration and discussion, if the board so chose to do that.
Okay.
My other quick question is, why are we referring to the authority of the second-class township code as part of the motion? Why are we not referring to the Home Rule Charter, which is our governing document?
Would you like me to respond?
Yeah, yes, you, you could articulate it better to me.
Oh, I don't know about that, Chair, but I'm happy to provide a response. As part of a presentation that the board received at the last meeting by Terry Kunkel with D C E D, she had brought forth that, as part of the second-class township code, uh, municipalities are entitled, or, you know, the, um, second-class township, municipalities that were initially incorporated as such, are entitled to pursue very specific types of revenue sources and taxes. And while we are Home Rule Charter that was incorporated in nineteen-seventy-six, we still are fundamentally incorporated in eighteen-oh-one as a second-class township. So while we have the ability to have more restrictive laws, or be able to do things that you wouldn't be able to do just simply as a designated second-class township, we still fall into that, that category, particularly as it relates to what our revenue tax source options are.
Although my memory may or may not be good, I've never heard of this being enacted in this way in the township, in my entire interaction with the township. This is a, to me, this is a whole new justification and procedure that has not been used in the past. And I don't know whether the board realizes that or not, or whether they even want to discuss that or not, but it is not something that has been employed in this way in the past. My comment with regard to this is that, is the new proposed draft going to address the issues related to the tank installation system currently in the western end of the township? Because that too was part of the fire protection system that this township operates. Is the new ordinance going to account for that system as well? And the system has, that tank system in the western end of the township has some definite issues. And a questionable return on investment. It hasn't, it, it needs to be revisited, and it needs to be discussed if included in the revised ordinance, and, and, uh, or if you're going to rescind the ordinance, this needs to be part of that rescinding as well, uh, uh, if that's, if that's the case. I haven't seen any reference to that particular part of our fire safety, uh, operation in any discussion or anything in writing that, that you've had. So, uh, I don't know whether it's just been an omission, or whether it's just, you know, but it needs to be part of this revision township-wide, because it is part of the assessment system that is in place, and it definitely has some problems. Thank you.
I have some questions for Mr. Keough, please.
Um, you may proceed, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Keough, you, you said you weren't aware of, uh, in particular, assessing, um, uh, revenue options, uh, authorized on the second-class township code. Is there a reason for that? I mean, was there ever a discussion about it in, in the past that you're aware of?
Not that I am aware of, but, uh, you know, I, uh, I haven't attended every township board meeting, and, uh, but I'm, I've never heard that, that approach. It's always been part, referencing part of the Home Rule Charter, which is our governing document.
Copy that. Were you aware that there an income tax is also an, uh, an option for second cha, second-class townships?
No.
Okay, copy that. Um, on the, the, the second part, uh, on the last thing you were just mentioning there, the, the tanks, was there some cer, um, specific language you were referencing regarding the ta, the tanks?
I'm not prepared tonight, uh, to, to, uh, address that. Uh, I, I, I made the assumption that that was part of the, the research that has been done regarding this whole issue, but I have ultimately not heard any discussion about it, and that's the only reason I brought it up, is because I haven't heard it discussed at all, so I don't know whether it is in fact part of the, the, uh, uh, final draft of this, uh, uh, special fire protection tax ordinance, or not.
Copy that. Okay, quick question, I, I, I've talked to a couple of you about this, and I, and I do, I do recall that, um, uh, there were some, like a tank system, larger tanks, associated with the fire department that were perhaps promised years and years ago, and there's been some, I, I think some people would say that there's been a little bit of, um, you know, three-card molly or something with, with that promise, and, and was actually delivered, um, for lack of a better term, but i- is that what you're referencing? Is the, the tanks that the fire department was going to procure and use to make sure fighting fires where there weren't, uh, hydrants that were active?
I believe, I believe so, I believe that's the, uh, uh, what, what I'm referencing. Uh, some of them, I can't, I can't tell you for sure whether there are two or three that have already been installed, I don't think anything has been installed recently, and, and there are, uh, a number of maintenance issues related to those tanks, uh, that's not clear, there's a, a number of issues related to the ownership of the land, uh, under the tank, and within the tank, and calculate, you know, there, there were a whole bunch of issues, and, uh, I believe that's what I'm referring to, yes.
Copy, thank you, sir. And then, um, the last question I had is, is, um, just on this, I didn't hear whether you were kind of a, uh, I, I heard, uh, maybe, maybe mixed in, in your, your responses, but, um, do, do you believe that it's, it's a good idea for spreading the cost of all fire stuff, spreading it across all residents, doesn't matter whether it's hydrants, or tanks, or just funding readiness of fire department? Are you in favor of spreading across all residents?
Based on my thought process through this and talking with a couple of other individuals, with regard to the fire safety issue, I think there is some value in spreading the costs across the entire township, uh, but you need to remember that in doing that, we are not providing equal service throughout the township as well. Uh, and so if one is going to have some kind of an assessment, uh, if everybody pays the same, you have to deal with the argument that everybody's not getting the same. And how do you deal with that, or whether we want to look at a, a ward system, uh, ward one being different than two and three, because it is with regard to fire hydrants? But I, I think generally, the idea of fire safety, uh, the alphas provide a, a reasonable service to the western end of the township, uh, without hydrants. And, uh, so, you know, I don't necessarily have a personal problem with that, but, but, uh, we got to remember that all is not equal with regard to fire safety.
I agree a hundred percent, yeah, we, we, you won't get a peep out of me with regard to that, I, I also, um, yeah, so I, I share, I share your, your, that's a really good sentiment, that it, there's some value in kind of saving staff time and, and, you know, kind of staring at maps and trying to identify the people within a certain value, so it's just, hey, everybody pays an additional two dollars. And, uh, that could be, that funds is, is all things fire, whether it's the hydrants, whether it's the, you know, like looking into this, working with alpha, maybe contributing a little bit more for some tanks, but the fact of the matter is that there will be a revenue source dedicated to fire safety. And I think that that'll be a really good, uh, thing. So, um, I'll pause there, um, Mr. Chair, uh, thanks, Mr. Keough, for entertaining my question.
You didn't ask me the question of whether I supported a tax increase in order to fund this concept, uh, and the, the answer...
I wasn't gonna ask that.
The answer, well, I want to make sure that I'm reasonably clear, that my answer to that is no. I think that we, public safety is a primary responsibility of the elected officials of this township, and I believe that with our tax, existing tax base, we should be providing those services as part of our basic tax base in the township, uh, as opposed to adding an additional tax to cover something that is as critical as it is to the role that the board has in managing this township. That's my full answer.
That's the answer to the question not, not, not asked, but, uh, allow me then, Mr. Chair, to, 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 um, I guess state, state a couple of things in, in relation to that, that our cog contribution has gone up, Mr. Keough, and everybody watching, our, and that's for fires, and a part of that's part of fire safety, new truck coming in four years from a sinking fund factor perspective, so these are all, they're all good reasons why we're having to contribute more. Um, you know, salaries aren't going down any, anytime soon anywhere. But again, it's a very transparent and dedicated fund and amount, uh, that, that everybody, uh, you know, will, will know what, what their dollars are going for, for this particular fund, over.
Did you have anything you wanted to add, some trees say?
Well, I'm happy just to, um, to talk a little bit about the, the presentation again, and I think there was a great deal of detail that was provided, uh, in the agenda about the fire protection tax, and, and I would say too, it's, it's not a traditional approach, but it's becoming a more popular approach that we're seeing rec, uh, municipalities take forward, largely because it's very transparent. Um, the fire, according to the legislation, a municipality that incorporates a, a dedicated fire protection tax is responsible for essentially taking those fu, those taxes that are collected and, and putting it into what we call a restricted fund. So all of the dollars collected through a fire protection tax i- is much easier tracked than, say for example, quite frankly, earned income tax, right? That, that revenue, those taxes get collected, that revenue goes into the general fund, and then you see lots of, uh, accounts that are expensed by the, the general fund, and the very specific dollars are not required to be tracked, and you, and traditionally, we've never tracked it here at Ferguson Township, along with most municipalities in the Commonwealth. When you end up adopting a dedicated fire protection tax, or a dedicated library tax, what the municipality then is held accountable to show where those dollars are being expended very specifically, and the legislation is very specific to say what you can spend those dollars on, um, staffing, equipment, uh, maintenance, and you can't go outside of those very restricted, uh, areas of expenditures. And so I think the one benefit is that while you may consider, uh, and of course, it is a board's decision, I don't have a vote here, our role here is to bring the staff inform, or excuse me, to bring the Board of Supervisors the information, their options that they should be able to consider and understand what those benefits look like for their constituents. And in this particular case, uh, sure, while seventy-seven percent of the survey respondents indicated that they were unaware about this assessment, it's likely because they were not assessed. Uh, but others have said that they would be willing to pay more to understand that there would be an equitable application of this public safety. I think much to what Supervisor Patterson also stated, Chair, is that, you know, your expenditures are going up, um, you know, even if you're able to scale back expenditures in a very unrealistic scenario here, just at Ferguson Township, your cog contributions have significantly increased over the last decade, and so it does kind of put you into this, into this position to have to assess some, some, some options. Uh, and so I think, in this particular case, we've seen cog, uh, fire protection contributions increase, I don't have the percentage in front of me, I think it's near forty percent, it's very significant, I think from last year to this year, it's four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, give or take, to about six-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand, and we're gonna continue to see those costs rise astronomically, because we are moving towards what we already have implemented as of this year, a hybrid workforce, and that is going to continue to grow, and so your expenses for fire protection services alone are going to continue to increase pretty significantly. And so whether the board continues to use reserves, which you have reserves, you could do that, but I think your position now to really consider what a small incremental fire protection tax could look like, and adopt that, even if it's half a mil or one mil, one mil's gonna give you about six-hundred-and-sixteen, six-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars, your cog contributions for fire protection services alone are six-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand. So you're still gonna need to, to, to dip into your general fund just to pay your cog fire protection services alone. If you incorporate this tax, not only just to pay your cog contribution for fire protection services as a public safety service, and you consider the repeal... as a public safety service, and you consider the repeal of the assessment, and I do want to provide clarification, I think Mr. Keel brought up a good point. And the point is the potential for a misunderstanding. The recommendation to the board isn't to repeal all of the fire assessment, Chapter 7. It's not, the recommendation is not to repeal Chapter 7, Part 2 in its entirety. The recommendation is to repeal and replace Chapter 7, Part 2, specifically Sections 202 to 204, which does not speak to any of the items except for the expenditures. It's just discussing the assessment. So if you repeal the Sections 202 to 204, you're not repealing the ordinance entirely, which means the concerns that Mr. Keel brought forward to the board are not necessarily items that you need to give your attention to for consideration this evening. And then I would also note that, yes, I think that Mr. Keel raises a really great point that staff began looking into following the, the public hearings that we held here for Rock Springs Water Company, who did we hold that? The PUC, Public Utility Commission, thank you. We did hear somebody, a resident, make a comment regarding the tanks. We began looking into it. We, we have become familiar with a particular neighborhood, Lions Point. And we are further exploring and understanding about those fire tanks. I will say that when we pull the land development plan, it specifically does state Ferguson Township assumes no responsibility or liability for those tanks. And so we are still researching this matter, probably even going to have some conversations with the solicitor. But that's all the further that I can share. But I did want to validate Mr. Keel's concern and acknowledge that those fire tanks are separate from the discussions this evening as it relates to Chapter 7, Part 2, Sections 202 and 204 for your consideration. And I'm happy to answer any questions beyond that.
Thank you for that information. If there's no questions on that, I will defer to Mr. Haller.
Yes, thank you for that. And again, I'm just going to take in everything that I've heard this evening, as well as conversations I've had with constituents leading up to this. And I, I guess, I know my concern is this. We're talking about the, the hydrants. And then the, the conversation is expanding out to the total fire protection area. And we're back to, well, the hydrants are only a certain part of the ordinances, et cetera, that are going to be repealed. And here's my concern. My concern is that by doing this in a piecemeal manner, without a strategic or an overall consideration with, with the Tax Review Board and others coming to the table and offering perspectives on, I'm worried that we're going to end up with some sort of, my words, Frankenstein ordinance that has, you know, certain parts repealed, other parts added to totalities considered but not enacted. And then the conversation for me and maybe others is going to get lost. The, the specifics on how this is going to impact the, the bottom line, the taxpayer and, and others in the township. So I would go ahead and offer that we definitely want to utilize the Tax Review Board and, and public input, not just the, the input that we've had thus far, which has been a very small subset of the township residents that have offered perspectives on this. But really open this up to a little bit more of a discussion and think about the strategy long-term and not do this in a piecemeal manner. That's my concern here is that we, to avoid ending up with some, an ordinance that is piecemealed and, for lack of a better term, a Frankenstein ordinance that may or may not, you know, move us or move the needle in the direction that we would want. So this item is for consideration and for discussion. And, and I look forward to more discussion here for the board with what I just raised.
Any other board comments, questions?
I guess my question, the Tax Review Board, is it fully, do we have, is it fully staffed?
That is a great question. And I would have to return to verify what that looks like.
Yeah, because I know we've had some of our ABCs not fully staffed. And anyway.
We might need some volunteers.
But I tend to agree with Mr. Haller that, you know, there's some, maybe we need to follow up on and approach this a little more thoroughly. Yeah, that it's understandable. And I appreciate the, the proposal in here for the, clearing it up, being more transparent. And, and I'm all about that. I guess that's how I am, sorry. You can go to Omari first.
Mr. Patterson?
Oh, no, I'll wait for Mr. Strickland, please.
Mr. Strickland's thinking.
I mean, that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, to me, this makes a lot of sense to move in this direction. Like you said, it's transparent. I think, you know, where it's detailed about what can be, what the funds can be used for makes sense. And we've been told by the current fire director and previous that our expenses are only going to increase very significantly as we add more paid staff. So I, I think, to me, this makes sense. You know, I, I see the, the benefits of additional discussion or Tax Review Board to make sure the ordinance is, is clear. But this, this expense will not decrease, is what we've been told. It will only very significantly increase. And so to me, this, this approach does seem logical.
Yeah, and it seems more apparent, especially no matter what the size of the fire protection program is, that this fire tax is going to be, what is going to be able to keep all fire departments able to continue on. Unfortunately, you know, that a lot of, even your smallest ones are beyond that fundraiser alone will, you know, keep it going phase. So they need the support somewhere.
So are we going to need a new motion from Omari?
Um, Mr. Patterson, we would defer back to Mr. Patterson. So, you know, if any, if Mr. Patterson or anyone is ready to make a motion on how we-
I think I have a couple of more questions.
Okay.
I'm just gonna need a little bit of help here because this Tax Review Board notion, and, and somebody's got to remind me when's the last time the Tax Review Board met. But my understanding is it's been 15 years. That offer, it's evident. Been a long time, right?
Yes.
Yes, affirmative.
2005, 2025?
Yeah.
Wait, we're saying we haven't met in 20 years? Interesting. So I, I'm a little, I'm a little like, I, I like the idea of using the Tax Review Board, but it's this, that, that's kind of a myth. It hasn't been, it hasn't met at all. Even the last time taxes were raised before last year, which was what, 15 years before that? So, you know, lobbying some other kind of, forgive me for this, but I'm going to call it a bureaucratic thing, when, you know, the folks that are closest to it are sitting in the room and on this call. I don't know. I don't know what the right answer is. It could be, go ahead and do that, but I, I think you've got to spin up a bunch of people that I've never met before. That's my gut, gut feeling here. So then my next question is, when are we getting together again to talk about, to Matt's point, the, just the overall strategy of our revenue for 2026? Is that the November 7th meeting?
The board could certainly discuss it at the November 7th meeting.
Okay.
You could.
Great. And so then my, my next question is, I think last year we were kind of down to the wire when we made the decision, because there were some implications on timing to posting with the various state and local entities and telling winter tax what the new number was, all that good stuff. What is that timeline to implement this? And whatever else we decide.
You had something, Ms. Strickland?
Yeah, I just wanted to say we did appoint a number of residents to our Tax Review Board during the ABC time at the end of last year. So we have five out of seven seats filled. So we do have people in that we just appointed a lot.
Thank you. Did anyone else down here have anything otherwise?
Oh, did my question get answered about timeline?
Oh, yes.
We could, the, the board certainly could use the special meeting to have that discussion. You know, I think, you know, what was presented tonight is one potential strategy. I mean, I'd like to believe that there was, you know, it's understood by the board, your manager, your solicitor. We've definitely put a strategy together for you. It's not a piecemeal. But also acknowledging you don't need to, you don't have to act. You have a healthy reserves. The auditor shared with you that generally three months of operational cost is all that you need. And when that report came to the board, you had approximately 8.2 million in reserves and we anticipate that to go up by the end of this year. But I, but I strongly encourage you, so your future board mates and your future manager and your future staff are not in a reactive situation. You, Ferguson Township is not in a position to maintain the services. And as you are aware, as we discussed, Chapter 25, for example, when we went to try to cut $30,000, that was in the proposed budget. You know, we were quick on our feet in that point in time at a staff level to recall that ordinance. But there are several ordinances that, and policies that are available for any of us at any point in time to go onto our, onto our website and peruse those ordinances. But your, your predecessors, my predecessors, we, you know, they have done the good work to lay the foundation to be the, the quality premier municipality that we are. But to do that have required several policy documents that have been enacted that also come with very dedicated expenditures. And you, as a board, are really facing some of those decisions. And I wouldn't say they were bad decisions. I would say that's what lands us a, a great municipality that we have today with the, the high level, the high quality level of services. But if you want to maintain that, I, you know, I don't know that we can keep the same quality of services if we're constantly looking to cut between quarter or half a million dollars from the proposed budget. I mean, I appreciate and think it's such a, an admirable move that the board makes to go through each one of those accounts to really, you know, evaluate what do we need versus what we want. But, 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 you know, we have to also forward looking and to be forward, you know, ready for all of the, the unknowns ahead of us, ranging from, you know, the external economical influences, right? We really want to get ahead of this. And that's why I keep bringing to the board, you know, proposed suggestions that have been well-vetted by your, you know, professional staff, myself and the solicitor. And while I'm absolutely not dying on the sword for the proposed strategy, it is a strategy. And I think to Supervisor Patterson's point, you can continue talking about other strategies, but we are going to eventually, we are going to come up on the time, right? The November 7th special meeting then allows for one more meeting and we have to get it out, the budget finalized and advertised for adoption the first or second week in December. And so we still have some time for these conversations. But, and you can choose not to do anything, have healthy reserves. But I'm, I'm, I'm really encouraging you to, to just get ahead of it as opposed to being reactionary.
Yeah, good.
Okay, so timeline wise, I heard November 7th, we have time, like, this motion today, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So November 3rd, we have actually, tentatively, we would have brought it back for the board to review and authorize legal advertising for a public hearing for December 1st. Now, that said, we also have, for clarification, a special meeting, tentatively as a placeholder, held for November 12th, I believe at 12:15.
Yeah.
We were going to propose that we not need that. But if we would like to further discuss revenues options, I think the November 12th special meeting would be a great time for the board to do that. Does that answer your question, Mr. Patterson, more specifically?
Almost, almost. It's a couple more maybe clarifying questions then on that. So November 12th gets us to the December 1st meeting as well. It's 3rd or 12th, they're both fine. And December 1st is our last meeting for the year?
December 8th is our last meeting for the year.
Okay. Could something happen on the 1st and then move forward on the 8th? Is that not enough time?
Well, any significant changes, we, we start, so the November 12th, really, any significant changes would require staff time, right? So we would have to, to, to have enough time to be able to go and do with the work, right? Whether it's a preparation of a new ordinance, ordinance amendment, filing with the county, any, any of our changes that we're making with our taxes. So I would say the November 12th is probably the last date in order for us to get the final budget prepared for adoption, whether it be the 1st or the 8th. At that point, the 1st or the 8th is, it's indifferent. But November 12th would be the last date that I would say gives staff enough time to do the work that we need to do to get the budget prepared for adoption.
Okay, thank you. I'll raise my hand later. See Mr. Haller's hands up.
Patty?
I guess in light of what you had just said, Centuries, I really, actually, the healthy reserves is something that I really am interested in keeping. Particularly in these uncertain financial times. I mean, you know, we talk about Frankenstein ordinance, to use Matt's words. We're sort of in a Frankenstein time right now with no state budget and, and who knows what's coming from the federal. So keeping the healthy reserves actually is what I'm interested in. And so what's presented here tonight seems like maybe a piecemeal way to do it, but it is a strategy. And so in light of what you said, thank you for that. I, I am supportive of this approach.
Okay. Going back to the person that used the term Frankenstein, we'll recognize Mr. Haller.
Yes, thank you for that. Maybe it's because it's Halloween that that's kind of front of mind.
I thought so.
But, yeah, but I just want to share, I guess, you know, it was last year around this time, I believe, when we first asked for what are the levers that we could pull when it comes to taxes, et cetera. And we first, we heard for the first time that there is a fire protection tax, what was it, last Thursday, if I'm accurate, you know, in the presentation. So I'm concerned that this has come in again at the 11th hour and we're being put, you know, in a position to make a decision very quickly when, and again, I'm just going to go with my experience on the cog finance committee. When I first joined that committee, it was January, February or so of the year before when we said we have to do better with communicating timelines and figuring out how do we get things in front of townships and everybody to offer feedback. And we laid things out in a Gantt chart, visual representation that has improved so many different things. And, and here we are now, essentially being, not required, but having to make a decision around taxes again at the last minute. And I don't know how we get out of this cycle. Because I've brought to the table and thought about these things well in advance. We've asked, you know, four levers around this time last year. And we find out the levers last week. And now we're in this position. And I, I know the buck stops here, happy to make tough decisions, but I don't want to make tough decisions based on gut reactions or reactions that are just that, just reactions to having to make these decisions at the last minute. I'm sorry, I'm just a little, I guess, a little frustrated with that because we, we look for, for better on, in cog. And I know staff and everybody's doing their best, but yet here we are again. So I'm, I'm a little disheartened. And that's just an open and honest statement from where I'm sitting right now. So yes, tough decisions have to be made and I think we can do better. That's all.
Mr. Patterson?
Given the timeline,
I believe you're.
I'd like to, so I, I move to table this.
Can I respond to Matt?
Just moving to table.
Can I respond to Matt first?
Yes.
And I just wanted to respond to you about that we learned about this last week. I, I disagree. I think what we learned about last week was the verbiage. Because we had a vote earlier that we, where we instructed staff to, to find out what our options were. And, and this is, so we knew that there had to be other things. I mean, we'd even had other, we ultimately knew that we had a revenue issue compared to our expenses. And, and so this is the process, and, and government process is slow. So I want to say that, that motion to instruct staff happened in the spring. And things just don't happen that quickly. We just learned the terms. But we ultimately knew we had, we were looking for some other ways of increasing our revenue. And so, sorry, let me see.
Yeah, I, I mean, I was just gonna say, I agree. That was kind of my understanding. I would have expected something like this to come at budget time where it did. So we saw this in the proposed budget. And so to me, that timing kind of makes sense. So that's, that was my expectation.
And I also want to just kind of recall that when we vetted the dates for budget, you know, the, the understanding that I had too was that we wanted to bump up our budget discussion dates compared to last year and expand the number of meetings that were dedicated to budget. And that's what we did. I think last year, we had these meetings, October 26th and October 28th. Ring a bell that I could be off? But they, you know, the budget meetings were held the last week in October. And this year, we started these budget discussions the first week of October. And while there were some conversations in earlier meetings, absolutely in response to the interest in wanting to talk about revenue sources, it, it really led towards, you know, sending letters to PML and Pell Pennsylvania Economy League, as well as our representatives, as well as lobbying for other legislation to expand, for example, the option for municipalities to increase local service tax. So I, I would like to respond to that and say that I think there's been a significant effort in response to the interest in wanting to explore options. And a lot of, a lot of time has been dedicated to that. And what's been presented beginning, I believe, the first week in October has been a well-defined, developed strategy that's an option. I know all of you have different positions, whether you want to keep the reserves or you don't want to keep the reserves, whether you want to increase taxes or whether you don't want to increase taxes. My job as your manager is defined in the Home Rule Charter is to bring to you a budget, a proposed budget that is for you then to take forward. So I've, I've done my part in terms of presenting a, a strategy that has been vetted through DCED and with our solicitor and in response to the, the needs and what we've heard from your constituents in terms of please don't raise taxes, but recognizing we have to do something over the next five years. And so these incremental taxes, but also in a very transparent way. And so respectfully, I understand if the board wants to move into a different direction, and you're happy to host those conversations November 12th. But I, I would like to say on the record, I think we've been very responsive with some, some strategy in response to what the board's requested.
This, Mr. Patterson, back to, you said about tabling. I think you meant you want to maybe postpone. I would need a second to entertain that.
Too late, man. I could do, I can, I can make it again, but however, I. We have an advertisement issue perhaps. So I, I do think. Yeah, we can table it to the 12th. We can have.
I would second that.
Yeah, so, yeah, move table to 12.
Okay, it would be debatable, so. However, Ms. Stevens and Ms. Strickland feel?
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready to vote on this today, so.
Yeah, I think I'm ready to vote on it today as well.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think I would be ready as well.
Because there will still be discussion when it comes back. This is a direction to.
Right.
A directive to prepare these.
On the motion to postpone, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no?
No.
No. Motion fails. With Stevens, Thompson, and Strickland dissenting. Mr. Kio, thank you for your patience. I had, I had some, some traffic of questions coming through.
This discussion took a turn that I wasn't expecting. Certainly did not prepare all that much for, except sitting here. Given my age, and I had a breakfast meeting in Altoona at 7:30 this morning. Excuse the possibility that I, I, I don't get everything exactly the way I want to. The direction that this has taken with the discussion about the Tax Review Board, do we use it, do we not use it? It hasn't been used in X number of years and all of that stuff. Part of that should be moot because the Home Rule Charter calls for the Tax Review Board to be used. Now, there may be an interpretation of that Home Rule Charter that says, well, we can, we can skip. And last year, I think we should have involved the Tax Review Board last year. Not doing it doesn't make it right. I would much rather have this board change the Home Rule Charter by procedure than I would to just ignore a particular process that is called for. That's the way to do it. Now, it may not be convenient given as we move forward this year, but I just don't think that's, ignoring it is the way to go. And, and I also, the reference and interpretation with regard to the Second Class Township Code, I think I'd like to see some, I'd like to see some more discussion about that and why the Home Rule Charter doesn't permit you to do what you want to do. If the Home Rule Charter doesn't permit you to do what you want to do, I would much rather see you, again, make a change in the Home Rule Charter than I would some interpretation of the, the, the Charter and the Second Class Township Code. I helped write the Home Rule Charter. There aren't many of us left. But I know with regard to the Tax Review Board discussion, not having them have that review is not what was intended. Thank you.
Chair, I just would like to quote from the Home Rule Charter, Section 604, Tax Review Board. So there are actual powers and duties of this Tax Review Board. And so one of which that would apply to this evening's conversation, I think Mr. Kio, I want to say for the record, has a really good point. If there's something about the Home Rule Charter that ever a board is, is not interested in, then the change to the Home Rule Charter is the first step. But I would like to acknowledge that the Tax Review Board, Section B, review and monitor the taxing program of the township. And so what I was mentioning earlier is that if we have a tax program or a tax plan that we would like to take to the Tax Review Board, that would be something substantive for them to review and be able to give feedback to you as the board of supervisors. We don't have, outside of a discussion or this proposed ordinance, we could consider this proposed ordinance or a variation of it to be the tax program. Outside of a tax program, we wouldn't just ask the Tax Review Board to generate ideas because that's not in the, in the, in the code. Also, Section 604B, number two, prepare and tax exoneration policy for the township and submit it to the board for approval. Staff has not found anything on the record that indicates that's ever been done. So I, I'm going to continue to list the items that our Tax Review Board could do, not required to do, could do. And we have not, we have not convened them, therefore, we haven't utilized this part of the charter. We could always, at any point in time, do that. Section B3, review exoneration lists and recommendation action. B4, establish a long-term tax plan for the township's consideration. Review the existing tax program consistent with current and projected budget requirements. And this was amended in 2003, and then again by resolution in 2004. And so I'm not opposing at all the idea of leaning into the Tax Review Board. I, I am happy to do that. But I think this board, when you decide to do that, you should give very clear direction as to what you would like your Tax Review Board to do. So they are not, they are not an ABC that has a, a different understanding of what their charge is. So I am in support of convening the Tax Review Board. Much of what we've discussed, however, I look to the board, and maybe that's the meeting that we have in the near future to better understand what you, as a board, would like to charge your Tax Review Board to do. And so that can be very clearly articulated. And I'll stop with that clarification.
Ms. Strickland.
I guess I'm going to hold my comment based on what you read out of the Charter because that was, that was interesting, so. Yeah, let me think about that for a second.
Okay. Mr. Patterson.
Respectfully, if we cared about this Tax Review Board, we should have been using them for the last 20 years. I have no problem, like, getting them engaged in 2026 and having the first meeting and looking at a long-term plan. But I just don't, I don't agree that there's some sort of requirement for Tax Review Board that hasn't been used for 20 years. That said, I move to direct the Township Manager to prepare and advertise for adoption of an ordinance repealing Chapter 7, Part 2, Sections 202 to 204 of the Ferguson Township Code. By the way, I'm gonna piecemeal this, these motions if someone will take the same direction with me.
So you're making a motion for that first part of just repealing Chapter 7, Part 2, Sections 202 to 204 of the code? Do we have a second on that?
I guess I'll second it so that I can ask a question.
Yeah, I was, I was contemplating seconding it myself, so, discussion.
Just to, where, where I'm going with this, and again, I probably should have said it before, but I, I think we start with, if we can all agree here today that we want to repeal this, this current assessment that only hits X number of homes around a fire hydrant when X plus whatever fire hydrants hit it, we, we can all agree to that. There's $50,000 selected for that, and it's from, you know, a very small subset of the township. From the survey, everybody uses it, and so we do need to do something different. And, and everybody agrees, not everybody, 75, 80% of people agree that it should be spread across everybody. So I, so I think this is the first step. And, and so then the second step is then, I think we, we, we like, from what I heard from the other vote, when we didn't vote to table this, is that we do agree on this millage, but I think that that vote is perhaps a little different. I'm gonna toss that out. Something that, that kind of similar verbiage, but it would be for, you know, just, I want, I want to take these in, in two parts so that we can at least agree on the repeal. And then we can maybe have a, a motion or two or three on the, what is it replaced with? Over.
Any other debate on this?
I guess I would just ask the manager thoughts on just repealing this.
As a standalone?
Yeah.
Correct. We would then, it, it would depend on what's to come after that. So I don't want to make any presumptions that nothing is coming afterwards. But if, if, if we repeal that alone, what would happen is we would not, we would plan not to administer the fee assessment to those residents in 2026, and we would remove that revenue source from the 2026 budget. And while I mentioned as a recommendation, it, it is still an item that the board could still take a vote on, which would be, do we refund all of those dollars that we currently have to the residents? And so thinking as a standalone action item that was just motioned and seconded, or utilize the surplus funds to use for our COG fire protection contribution? Both would be reasonable options for the board. And again, I'm speaking only if that is the standalone option. Does that answer your question, Ms. Strickland?
Yeah, thanks very much.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Heller.
Yes, I guess the point of clarification from Mr. Patterson's motion, are we proposing then that future motions will be made tonight related to this after this repeal potentially goes through?
That's correct.
Could you expound on what those motions might look like, since this is all related?
Absolutely, absolutely. So in, it could, my proposed next motions would be one around, exactly what Madam Manager just mentioned there around the credit, and then also around, in, in putting in this fire assessment, specific, special fire protection ordinance. But it would be with some offset, in my view, and I was thinking about that as it were the motion, or the, this other motion. Hence why I broke them up, because it would be hard for me to voice the other one as I was still crafting language in my brain. But, and, and, and now that you asked me to kind of toss it out there, I was thinking somewhere around like, I think the, our managers, you know, recommended 1.1, 1 mil, but I think even that 1 mil doesn't cover everything. So I was thinking maybe 1.1 or 1.2. And also offsetting that with kind of a reduction in the, the real estate transfer tax that we did, that we increased last year. So that's, that's where my brain's going right now.
And I appreciate you saying that because I hate to say sometimes you, you might think like me and I might think like you, so I'm sorry to put that on you. Because I, I would agree on repealing this, this evening. But I'd like some, I'd like to figure out what that offset would look like to Mr. Kio's point. I don't want to go ahead increasing taxes, you know, in a blanket way just to cover fire protection. But if we did take it, if we did decrease taxes, for example, the ones that we raised last year, to go ahead and offset this cost, and therefore only putting it towards fire protection because of transparency and all the reasons we heard this evening, I, I could see that for tonight. So I appreciate the clarification and happy to go ahead and vote on this motion.
Any other discussion? Is this going to be a voice vote, Madam Manager?
Yes.
Could we hear the motion again? This is just to repeal this section, if we could just reiterate.
That's right. I move to direct the Township Manager to prepare and advertise, sorry, the motion is to direct, direct the Township Manager to prepare and advertise for an adoption, or adoption, adopting an ordinance repealing Chapter 7, Part 2, Sections 202 through 204 of the Ferguson Township Code.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Aye? Any opposed, say no? Okay. Okay, that was unanimous.
All right, here's my second one, if you'll take that, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I move to direct the township manager to prepare an ordinance enacting a special fire protection tax ordinance of two thousand and twenty-six, which establishes a dedicated millage for fire protection services with an offset to existing taxes. And I'm willing to add in there, you know, an example of the dedicated millage being one point two mil, and then the property tax is coming down by point one, and the, uh, transfer tax coming down by point one, or what, yeah, some such numbers that.
Could you run through those numbers one more time?
Those would be examples only, I, I care.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
To Matt's point, the direction is to, to move forward with this. If I were to sum this up, that motion, actually, I'll wait till discussion, or until somebody says, chooses that.
Do we have a second on that?
I'm sorry, I have my hand raised, but I'm just curious, I, I still have some clarifying question before that was.
On the motion that Mr. Patterson just made? You may proceed, Mr. Heller.
Just, just to clarify.
I need to second for discussion, I need to second for discussion.
I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Back to discussion?
Yes.
Okay, um, again, it needed to, I wanted, I was hoping to clarify that this, the, what was provided were examples, right? We talked about property tax, we talked about real estate transfer tax. And I believe those would be appropriate. And, um, I would like to see them maybe more as, not as examples, but from one of those two that, for example, that we increased last year. And just make it directive and not example. To what number, I don't know, but it, you know, that it should be, for example, the real estate transfer tax. Can we be specific?
I don't think we can.
Well, so if I understand Mr. Patterson correctly, he's looking to, if we increase the millage for the fire protection tax, say, one mil, that would equal six hundred and sixteen thousand, then we'd look to see, okay, for example, we increased local service tax by point two five last year. And so we would look to see what the equivalent of that is in dollars, and potentially match up a reduction of our existing taxes. So essentially, the dollars are equivalent with going up versus going down. Is that a different way to say what you've said, Mr. Patterson?
Almost, but I'm not looking for dollar for dollar, because that's not what we're doing. It's like our, our cog, cog contribution hasn't been offset at all, so we have to have more dollars coming in
That's good to hear.
this year than last year, period. But I am expecting to have at least some sort of, all right, folks, we asked for more last year, uh, for fire protection, and so we've got to do it again, because it's going to come down. However, with this now dedicated thing, then we, we, at least we can come down somewhat. We should come down somewhat elsewhere in some of those other places. Because we know there's, there's some other expenses elsewhere, so those can stay roughly the same. Uh, but they, they can come down somewhat. So if I were to, you know, uh, if we were to make the millage one point two, let's just say, for example, instead of six hundred and sixteen, it's six hundred and seventy thousand, then I think bringing the, the transfer tax down by point one would be a, you know, kind of a good starter percentage. Happy to make the motion to adjust, or we can just keep talking about this during discussion. For the transfer tax. And then, uh, maybe even bring down our income by point oh one or something.
Ms. Strickland.
I appreciate that, and I, I see your point now, because I do think we, we do need to increase the revenue, so I'm on board with that. So with the, with the offset reduction, I guess what I would like to see is a, a proposal, I'm not prepared to say a decrease here and a decrease there, I'd prefer to ask staff to come back with suggestions.
Yeah.
So maybe what would be best in the motion is if there is a, a suggested percentage to offset. So if you don't want to offset it by a hundred percent, is what you're saying, and I agree with that. So are you suggesting we offset seventy-five, twenty-five percent, or, or what's, what's the idea?
If I understood Mr. Patterson's motion correctly, I think the way it's worded gives staff that, that, that flexibility to go back and present what, what might make the most sense. So I think the motion as is, allows, gives us time to go back and strategize, like, what might we consider a reduction and bring back for the board's consideration, possibly at the November twelfth meeting, or maybe even November third.
Thinking I like that better than the beginning to do this with this tax or that tax, because then I think we might be falling outside of our advertising. If we do want to have that discussion, I would definitely encourage that, you know, discussion on specifics be added to another agenda, so that we can advertise that we are actually consider, strongly considering moving forward with different, uh, tax changes. Mr. Heller.
Okay, and for procedure, where does the tax review board fit into this?
The one that's met over the last twenty years?
The, the one that's spelled out in our charter, yes.
To review, uh, the, the kind of existing, not new, right?
Next meeting, yeah.
Well, we're, we're changing existing, aren't we, potentially through the motion?
I'm thinking we could possibly discuss the role of the tax review board in the next meeting, when we have a little bit more information, because at this point, what exactly are we going to be charging the tax review board to do? So, yeah, that's where I, I, I think, you know, for our next meeting to then direct the manager to call upon the tax review board in whatever manner we want.
I, I would agree with that, and using the conversation that, that's here, as well as the transcription and everything, as, as maybe some guiding principles for the tax review board, knowing that we are changing existing taxes, potentially.
Any other board discussion? If not, the motion, with the motion on the table, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say no?
No.
Okay, motion passes with Heller dissenting. Mr. Patterson, anything further?
Yeah, I, I think this other one, I, it's a little odd that I think the recommendation was to provide a credit to, or, sorry, provide some funds back for twenty-four, for, for twenty-five taxes paid by those, those homes. I'm, I'm not sure that's going to, I mean, what, what, I guess I don't have a motion yet, uh, because I'm not quite understanding, like, is, is that because it's going to be super inexpensive to give folks their money back, is it easier just to apply credit to next year, is it easier to just, hey, that's going to fund seed that, be the initial seed money for the, for this new special tax thing thing? I, I think I'd like to have some, some more, uh, information for how that would work.
It's a great question. Finance Director and I have talked about it a couple of times. Uh, we both acknowledged that there would be some administrative work involved with, you know, calculating, you know, formulating the calculations to administer a credit back to the taxpayers. But we both agree that it, it would be the right thing to do. Uh, at least the board could consider options for, maybe you wanted to do a credit for a one year or a two year. There's about forty-nine hundred parcels that are impacted by the fire hydrant assessment. But that is something that I would say we could further discuss at a later time, and we can bring back to you some, some more strategic, specific examples. The board is not obligated to, to do that, but could, because, because those funds could be arguably used for the cog contribution fire protection services. And that would be within your legal purview to reallocate for fire protection, and it would go in the form of a cog fire protection contribution. That said, perhaps we could consider, or the board wants to consider, a hybrid approach, where a portion of the surplus funds from the fire hydrant fund goes to the cog fire protection contribution, and a portion goes back as a credit to the forty-nine hundred property owners. And I would, I would just acknowledge that if you're looking for any specific example or path forward, I would just ask that we have the, until the next meeting, to put forth a very specific approach forward, or options for an approach forward. But fundamentally, those are your three options.
Okay.
So I'd like to, um, I, I don't have a motion on, on the, um, credit, and I really appreciate the, you know, or I guess the motion be to direct staff to bring back options for providing a credit for twenty twenty-five homeowners regarding hydrants fees paid.
Do you have a second?
Well, your motion sort of already says providing a credit. Maybe directing staff to.
Apologies, I can, I can amend that, just options for remunerating homeowners affected by the assessment in two thousand and twenty-five.
Can you spell that word? Does it, Patty, I'll second?
Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, could we just clarify the, the exact motion again?
The motion was to, uh, direct staff to provide options for remunerating those that were assessed in two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you for that, just needed to confirm.
All those in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Motion passes. Any further motions?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Patterson.
I move to direct staff to, um, convene the tax review board in Q one of two thousand and twenty-six.
Mrs. Patty, I'll second. Uh, well, Q one, okay, Q one.
Yeah. Just not sure if that fits concerning what we advertise for.
I would recommend that, that's a, that's a great path forward, it gives us time, or, you know, gives time for an agenda item to come in front of the board of supervisors, for you to discuss specifically what you would like the tax review board to do, and give some guidelines, some parameters. That gives me something that I can take back to the tax review board when we convene for the first time. And it can be clearly articulated in a designated, um, discussion at a board meeting between now and Q one date that we convene the tax review board. I think that's a very clear approach forward. I, I can appreciate the motion, and I can appreciate the time to get the board to have that dedicated discussion, so we, it's, it's clear moving forward what the charge is.
But that particular motion's not so far out in left field, like, I, I, I know we were trying to keep it to fi- fire tax.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you. I think that there's a broader discussion, I mean, even exonerations, the township's been operating with exonerations being done at a staff level. Um, and, and not that anything was wrong operating in that way, my predecessors, myself. That is something that gets done through the finance department, and it's not required to go through the, the tax review board, but it could, as stated, as an option for why the tax review board would convene. And so I think actually this discussion is broader than a tax increase. That's the purpose here, right? I think you want to really detail as a board what you want the scope of work specifically, specific to be, so it can be communicated to the tax review board, so there's undoubtedly, like, any, any ambiguity in what this board is asking them to do when they convene.
Ms. Strickland.
Are you thinking about what we advertised for?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking this current motion on the table should probably be made for another meeting.
Yeah, I guess that's a question, is the motion appropriate based on what discussion was advertised? So.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, I would say it was invoked in public comment.
So to your point, it was not, that particular agenda, yeah, no, so we, you're, you're, yeah, so we've, we've kind of blurred the concept of, of convening a tax review board into the discussion about fire hydrant utility assessment fee structure. Uh, so yes, to your point, we would be making, uh, taking action on, on arguably a very separate agenda item, and that was not, like, that was not advertised for discussion by the board this evening. So technically.
I disagree wholeheartedly.
Yeah, so, and, and I'm not disagreeing or agreeing, I'm saying technically there, there could be, I use the term arguably. And so I would say, you know, you, you could proceed, and, you know, if somebody has a concern, you could hear about it, or, you know, and whether or not that's legally a concern or not, I, you know, I would say if you want to be on the safe side of things, seeing as how the, the vote to convene the tax review board, uh, is separate from this entire agenda item, we could just bring it forward in the next agenda, you know, just have an introductory, like, an introductory conversation perhaps on the November third, that just acknowledges we want to dedicate a special meeting to discuss this in convenience in Q one. I'm, I'm not your solicitor, so I'm not going to say that legally it is or it isn't, but if you want to be on the safe side of things procedurally, we could move this vote to convene the tax review board.
We just took taxing action in two motions. And this tax review board, per the, per the charter, they would then be reviewing that taxing action that we took today.
But not until after.
We're, I'm just cod, I'm just codifying the concern that all of us heard in the meeting today. That was likely the reason Matt voted it down, or voted against it, right? Like, what about this tax review where it hasn't met in twenty years? I want to put this to bed, y'all. And, and, you know, whether we need to, you know, if somebody comes back and says we need to vote on it again, fine, but it is well within the, the bounds of us having a discussion on tax. And this is the vote that would be regarding getting the tax review board to do the thing that they're charged with in the charter, over.
I'm also happy just to say for the record, the Finance Director and I have no problem whatsoever committing to convening the tax review board by Q one, by no later than Q one, and prior to that, convening the, the tax review board, ensuring that there is a dedicated agenda item for discussion with the board of supervisors for them to go through section, um, to, or section B one through six, to better identify what the scope of work is for the tax review board. I publicly commit to that without the board needing to take a motion, if that's helpful at all. And you can still take a motion or not, but happy to make that comment.
I'd like to call the question.
Okay.
Call the questions.
Omar's motion of convening the tax review board that I seconded.
Do we have a second on it?
I already seconded it.
Yeah.
For January.
Well, to call the-
Q1, Q1.
He's-
There is no second for calling the question, but there is a motion on the floor.
Yes, and calling the question, I believe we need two-thirds vote to limit debate and then move on to the motion.
Well, to close debate, a second is required. So Ms. Stevens, you're seconding the motion to call the question, close the debate?
No.
No, okay.
Okay.
Well, if there's no further discussion, yes, Ms. Strickland?
I just want, the only thing I wanted to clarify was the timing. So didn't we want them to see this before we passed the budget?
That's virtually impossible, ma'am.
We'd have to advertise for the Tax Review Board to meet and then we'd have to, we'll first get you guys to give scope of work, guiding principles, and then advertise, and then advertise for any ordinance amendment or enactment.
I mean, I, I'll just say, I know when we discussed the Tax Review Board at the ABC meetings last, we did talk about how they would probably be meeting during budget time because that's when we discuss taxes. And I have no problem with having them meet in January, but I thought that was the issue with Matt voting that down was that he wanted them engaged prior to this. So I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page here, so.
Yeah, yes, and maybe I can offer some clarity as to my line of thinking here based on Mr. Patterson's motion. I believe that, yes, I'd like to see them involved prior to our decision this year, but if I understand Mr. Patterson's motion, it's really about setting us up for next year.
Right, and that's how I interpret it and I feel that it's not appropriate for this evening's meeting, which puts me in a little bit of a very uncharted situation. But based on what I'm seeing, I cannot necessarily just refuse a motion just because I disagree with that. So I'm good to proceed. I will not support this motion though, so there is that, so. Any further discussion? If not, I will call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. I say no. All right. Ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay, we have a discussion on an ordinance amendment or consideration to repeal Chapter 21, Part 4, Streetlights Assessments. And I'll recognize Township Manager.
Thank you, Chair. So August 5th, that Board of Supervisors meeting as well, there was an informational update titled "Review and Potential Amendment to Chapter 21, Part 4, Streetlight Assessments." And following that meeting, the Township hosted at the same time mentioned earlier, those two public input sessions, survey responses are summarized there in the agenda narrative and the longer version of the public input session summaries as well as the survey data that was collected. It's included as attachments in actually the earlier agenda item. But summarized survey findings are provided there with the agenda. And essentially, the board this evening is asked to discuss the Township's existing streetlight assessments provisions under Chapter 21, Part 4, with consideration to the public feedback that was received. Again, just thinking about the equitable application or fairness and the functionality of the current system, the board's asked to evaluate the options for funding streetlight operations and maintenance through more of an equitable township-wide mechanism in future fiscal years. Looking at the survey data that was collected, about 75% of the respondents were not aware that certain properties are assessed for streetlight cost, which makes sense because if you're not assessed, you probably are unaware that there are a very small number of property owners that live within, I believe, 280 square feet of the streetlight assessment or public amenity. You probably aren't aware unless if you're making that assessment fee to the township. We also received feedback that 46% of the respondents agreed that the cost for streetlights should be shared more broadly across the township and 33% supported eliminating assessments in favor of a general fund model. Nearly 70% of the respondents indicated that they would support or consider a small township-wide tax or fee increase to ensure equitable application. So this evening, the board is asked to consider options and what's in front of the board is to retain and clarify existing assessments or option two for consideration is to transition to a township-wide funding framework. Happy to answer any questions provided in the narrative, there's a much more detailed summary for your consideration.
Hey, any questions? Could I have a motion?
Mrs. Lee, so I'll move, the Board of Supervisors move to direct the Township Manager to prepare and advertise for adoption an ordinance repealing Chapter 21, Part 4, Sections 402 through 404 of the Ferguson Township Code relating to streetlight assessments for installation, operation, collection, and to reflect that in 2026 or future fiscal years. The Township may consider a general tax adjustment to offset streetlight expenditures and ensure consistent service levels.
Mrs. Patty, I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Ms. Strickland, seconded by Ms. Stevens, any discussion? Mr. Heller?
Sorry, not to be a broken record, where does the Tax Review Board fit into this since this is already an assessment that's being done right now?
I guess at this time it doesn't?
I guess it could be part of the Q1 thing that we just made a motion and-
Yeah, so it's an interesting question raised. The Tax Review Board in the code does not necessarily acknowledge that a reduction or repeal to an assessment fee would even be part of the scope of work. It could be if the board wanted to include that in the scope of work. At this point in time, it's with the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, so because this is an assessment fee, not a tax?
Right, you might recall the stormwater fee, when the board chose to repeal that fee, we did not convene the Tax Review Board and this would be essentially the same type of fee and the same consideration.
I apologize, didn't mean to interrupt, but thank you.
Mr. Patterson?
Is there a document, a 10-year review plan from the Tax Review Board?
Could you repeat that, it came in as inaudible? Oh, no. Oh, no. You okay, Mr. Patterson?
Testing 1, 2, 3, better now?
Yeah.
We can hear you.
Okay, very good. I was wondering, was there any documented long-term plan or any documentation from the prior Tax Review Board and how, yeah, any prior documentation?
That's a great question and I cannot answer that at this point in time. I'd have to, I'd want to confirm, if I understand correctly, you're asking is there any documentation on the long-term streetlight assessment fee, any long-term plans or any records that reference this funding strategy? Is that correct?
Correct, thank you.
Yeah, at this point in time, I'm unaware, but that doesn't mean that there isn't a file that I could go looking for.
Okay. Very good.
Possibly find or not find.
I do think that the, let's see, we had a few motions last go-around, I think this one is kind of in a similar vein where the way in which the last one was recommended, it kind of combined a couple of concepts. We've done the same thing here, we've combined a couple of concepts without the kind of 100% kind of where we're going. It, I think it gave kind of a general, like, maybe we're going to do something with the general tax. So I kind of maybe, you know, is there, Ms. Strickland, I'm just looking for some help here on any, anything to kind of, are we saying that we want to, the same revenue that was brought in for streetlights, just bringing that fame as a general, you know, property tax increase, is that where your brain is going?
No, I mean, not at this time. It's not, it's not a large fund and so I think it's just indicating that in the future, should those, my interpretation is, should that, should the need arise, it's acknowledged here that that revenue may need to be made up.
So in the repeal, the revenue will go away?
Correct, it's kind of come out of the general fund.
It'll be general fund, but in this case, it'll be reserves and that, the general, the reserves are healthy, but this is one thing that in this motion, we're okay with trying, just bring it, you know, that little bit out of the reserves. And I think I'm not opposed, so thank you for that, ma'am.
Mr. Heller?
Apologies, must be a stretch.
Ah, stretching. Board members in the room?
Yeah, I mean, I, it's, I like the consolidation of, you know, some of these smaller assessments like, you know, this, I think this makes sense to reincorporate into the general fund.
Okay. Anything further? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
Aye.
Was that in the affirmative, Mr. Patterson?
Well, in this case, it was when you said no, so I'm okay with being a no.
Okay.
Also, we're trying to get off immediately, so it's fine.
May the record reflect, Mr. Patterson dissented. Discussion on a repeal and replacement of Chapter 25, Tree, Section 110, violations and penalties, I will recognize Township Manager.
Thank you, Chair. Provided with the agenda is a narrative, a much more detailed narrative, I'm just going to briefly summarize. The board this evening is asked to, you know, follow up in the discussion held on August 18th, the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting. There was brought to the attention a procedural error in the legislative action and so asking the board to consider correcting the legislative action to repeal and replace Section 25-110, violations and penalties of Chapter 25, and also consider some broader updates to ensure an equitable enforcement of oak well prevention measures township-wide. As part of our, the previous board's discussion, there was public input that strongly suggested hearing the voices of the township and so the Township incorporated in the survey, solicitating feedback through the survey that was attached in full with a PowerPoint presentation in the first agenda, also includes the survey responses. And also probably more of the interest in the public input sessions held on September 18th and 25th was a focus on the oak well abatement and township enforcement of the ordinance and the resolution. It's my understanding, the Tree Commission met yesterday and we have members of the Tree Commission here in the room and so they have a recommendation which is to enforce the oak well abatement township-wide. And of course, they can certainly comment as the board would like to hear directly from them. Public inputs is summarized there in the agenda and the survey findings summarized here. The 63% of the respondents were not aware of the oak pruning moratorium and 64% supported township involvement in oak well abatement for all properties and 73% rated a healthy tree network as important or very important. Additional findings are also noted in the agenda attachments in Item 1. There is a breakdown of some options and considerations, there's the repeal and replace, Section 25, 110. There's also the policy and fiscal alignment the board is asked to give some consideration to, as you may recall, residents that live outside of the regional growth boundary, if they are reported to do any pruning to an oak tree during the moratorium period, there is not an enforcement applied to residents outside the regional growth boundary, whereas if you were living inside the regional growth boundary, not only is there the ordinance applying, you know, where the moratorium applying, but there is an enforcement matter at hand for the board's consideration, which is, you know, recognizing the variation in how the enforcement is taking place. There's also acknowledgement that there's some administrative enhancements that I would look to our staff to make recommendations for a ordinance amendment that would likely be led by our urban forester and discussed and engaged, engaging the Tree Commission to bring back as a recommendation for the board's consideration as well as the outreach and education component as well. All of that's pretty detailed in the agenda packet for the board's consideration and I'm happy to answer any questions, but ultimately, we're just looking to correct that legislative, to take that legislative action for that correction as well as look to see how the board would like to proceed with that fiscal impact related to the ordinance as it's currently written. So guidance is ultimately what we're looking for, for any change, if any changes is asked for by the board.
If there are no board members, I thank our Tree Commission folks as well as our urban forester for their attendance tonight, we don't normally go this late, but thank you for sticking around with us. Feel free to step forward to share any insights you'd like to provide to the board.
So I'm Director of the Tree Commission. Let me just clarify a couple things first. Our, our recommendation was just to expand the moratorium on pruning to the entire township and not to change anything else. Okay, so just to make that perfectly clear. So let me, let me back up real quick and I'll try not to give you a long lecture because I know it's late, but let me make sure everyone here understands what oak well is, how it spreads. So it affects oaks, it affects red oaks more than white oaks, the red oak group more than the white oak group, but white oaks can die from it too. Once, it has two ways of spreading. It can be spread by insects who will feed on the affected trees and pick up the fungus from feeding wounds on the affected trees and then they are attracted to wounds on other trees and they spread the fungus there. So that's how it gets spread over long distances. That's why the pruning moratorium is so important because it's a relatively easy thing to do and it can greatly reduce the likelihood of spread. And really frankly, there's, it's not that big a hardship to not be able to prune your oaks except during the dormant season. The other way the oak spread, the oak well spreads is through the root systems. And so once it gets established in a place where there are lots of oaks, just park forests for example, it can spread from one tree to the next through the root systems, which are all interconnected. Okay, so think of it as a slow-moving fire. Once that fire gets established somewhere, you can think of the long distance as sparks flying in the air and once it gets established somewhere, it's going to spread as long as there are other oak trees that are connected to those oak trees. And so if we don't do anything to stop it, it will kill every oak tree eventually that's connected to that initial infection. And so it could be thousands of trees. If we delay action to try to contain it, once we know what it is, it's going to spread and the difficulty of limiting, of containing that outbreak gets more and more expensive with every day that it spreads. Okay, so on one hand, there's the moratorium on pruning. That's the thing that, right now, that just applies inside the growth boundary and a couple other places. We would just like to see that expanded to the whole township. It's really hard to enforce, it's not like the arborist is going to go follow everybody with a chainsaw, make sure that they, you know, aren't cutting the wrong things. But at least it's there then. And if we have a situation where we have an oak well outbreak, somebody was pruning oak trees, then we can sort of trace that back to them and there's potential for liability then. The other issue is what you do once you have an outbreak in an area where there are lots of oaks. And you can either just ignore it and leave it up to individual landlords to either do something about it or not, and if that happens, basically, it's going to- something about it or not, and if that happens, basically, it's going to spread. Because there are going to be homeowners, landowners who don't do anything about it. Okay, so either you don't do anything about it, or the township says, okay, we're going to take care of it, we're going to pay for it, or you tell the homeowners, you're going to have to take care of it, in which case, the homeowner is not motivated whatsoever to tell us if they have an outbreak, and so we're unlikely to hear about it, because if they tell us about it, then we're going to come down real hard on them and say, hey, you got to pay for this. Which is why within the growth boundary and within selected urbanized areas, we have a policy currently where the township, at the direction, so if you read the current, um, ordinance, or it's either the ordinance or, what's that? Resolution carefully, it says if there's an outbreak and if the arborist thinks it's a problem, then here are things you can do. It doesn't say you have to. And that's important too, because if you've got a single oak tree that's isolated, there aren't any other oak trees, it gets oak wilt, there really isn't a huge need to mitigate it. That tree's going to die. What you want to do is make sure that that tree is disposed of properly, um, but other than that, there's not really a lot you need to do. If it happens over the middle of nowhere, where, you know, where it's maybe just one person's property, it's not going to affect anybody else's properties, then that could be just a problem of that property owner. It's where there are multiple properties, where if you don't do something on this property, it's going to spread to other properties, where it becomes a public issue. And that's why to some extent, you need the arborist to have some discretion about just exactly what we're going to do about it. So that's why, the reason we designed this back when we did it in 2016 or 2017, we only did it within the growth boundary and within urbanized areas, because that's where you need to worry about it the most, where if one house gets it, if one property gets it, it can spread to adjacent properties, and you have a public problem. That's why we did it that way. You could expand that to the entire township, and, and that would be fine too, as long as you give the arborist some discretion, but then that puts a lot of responsibility on the arborist to decide whether, are we, what are we going to do here? Not that the arborist isn't capable of dealing with that kind of responsibility, but if you don't do anything, and then it spreads and it causes a big problem, then you could potentially have a lot of responsibility. So there's a tendency to be very cautious in when something happens to do something, which is probably the best thing to do anyway. So basically, again, in summary, the pruning, really we need to live that throughout the whole township. That's kind of, in my opinion, a no-brainer in terms of mitigating, once you have it, it's, there's three options. You either don't do anything, you require the homeowner to do something about it, or either, or the township takes care of it. There is a tricky thing when the township takes care of it, because we still need the permission of the property owner to mitigate. And so that's where sort of the tricky thing comes in. If a, if a property owner says, no, you can't come on my property and treat my oaks, then that allows it to continue to spread and increases the cost to the township. And so having some liability where a homeowner or a landowner says, no, I'm not going to let you come on my property, I'm not going to let you control this thing, um, there needs to be some kind of potential consequences for that individual for the spread that they have allowed. They've allowed it to spread, maybe the next landowner, you can create a perimeter there and stop it there, but now you've got a much bigger outbreak and a much harder thing to stop. So I think those are all of the issues, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from the board? Uh, Mr. Patterson?
I was curious on that last statement about if a homeowner doesn't treat it, then it's more expensive to township. Can you expand on what, that, that math, or how it's more expensive to the township?
Well, if a homeowner refuses to let us come in and treat their oaks, then they basically increase the perimeter that we have to deal with. And so that increases the cost, because the oak wilt is going to spread through, is very likely to spread through their property, and then it's going to be to the next adjacent property, and that will have just a larger perimeter to contain it from. Does that answer the question?
It does. However, earlier you, you also said that it's, you know, the township may do something, so it only increases the cost if the township opts to do something.
If-
And other, more property owners say, yes, you can come on my property to treat. Is that accurate?
Sorry, I started to interrupt you, and I missed a question.
Uh, yeah, we, we, sorry about that. I think, uh, so where I was going was that, um, that if, if one homeowner says no, it increases the cost, because then other homeowners are likely to get oak wilt in the surrounding area. And if more property owners say no, then there's more oak wilt, there's a growing thing there. So it's, it, and the township chooses to address it, then it is going to increase the cost for the township.
Yes.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. No, I appreciate that, but, and that is exactly my concern of the township choosing to treat, and it's completely unbounded. Like, I, if you had asked me, you know, six years ago, do I think there's a possibility that there could be some sort of oak wilt pandemic or something, I'd be like, no way. But now that we've experienced an actual pandemic in our lifetime, in my lifetime, uh, I'm, I'm now a little worried about kind of an unbounded, uh, you know, issue here. So, so I, I think, I, I think we're on the same page with, hey, you know, we just need, you know, things across the board. I think if a homeowner needs some help, we should kind of provide the opportunity for some help, um, whether that's some, you know, low-interest loans, but ultimately is up to the homeowner to do that. So I, I think those are some of my thoughts on, on what you're saying there, but I, but I, I appreciate the, the, um, the, the analysis and, and kind of the initial kind of, uh, you know, desire to, to address this in 2017, um, and, and, and your willingness to kind of review it and, and, and kind of perhaps correct some, some words that, uh, weren't quite, weren't, uh, maybe considered, you know, eight years ago. Over.
Go ahead.
So I'm talking about a situation where the township is bearing all of the costs, but a homeowner just says, no, you can't come on my property. The alternative, where you put it on the homeowner to deal with it, unless you're going to force them to deal with it, then it's just basically not going to get contained. And to me, that's a much more draconian situation where you would say, we're not going to pay you anything, but you have to do something about this. But, you know, I guess that's one possi-, I'm not even sure about, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know anything about the legality of requiring a homeowner to treat their trees if they get oak wilt. My recommended action, and the way that it is right now, is that the township pays for the cost. And the only reason an affected or an adjacent property, so it's not necessarily an affected property, but when you contain an outbreak, you have to treat the adjacent properties as well. And if an adjacent property said, owner said, no, I don't want you to come on my property and treat my trees, then that's, we're not talking about any costs to them, they just don't want you coming on their property to treat their trees. And if they refuse to let you come on the property as a part of containing that outbreak, then they potentially, in fact, likely increase the cost of containing that outbreak.
Any other questions that can? There are none here, uh, recognize Mr. Heller?
Yes, thank you for that. And I just want to say, thank you so much for the explanation about pruning. So essentially, I mean, that was wonderful. So essentially, by people pruning, they're opening up, you know, sections of the tree, which then attract the insects that could carry these. So I, I really thank you for that. That's an important aspect. I, I wasn't sure if, um, you know, if folks were aware of that previously. And I guess my, my question is this, or let me make a statement first. What I'm concerned about, um, is of course the spread, and when I hear about losing oak trees, especially within the regional growth boundary, that can affect then property values, when we think about things, when it comes to taxes and everything else that we've been talking about, a decrease in property value because of, you know, multiple oak trees that have died, doesn't help anybody. And, and it doesn't help the township for the long-range strategy. So where, where I'm going with this, and maybe you could walk me through a scenario, please. Um, say you show up, and there are two properties next to each other, one, and both trees look, uh, damaged by oak wilt, and there are adjacent properties with, um, you know, that appear to have healthy trees. I guess my question and my concern is, in a scenario like that, those healthy trees, let me ask this question first. The healthy trees, would they immediately be treated if those homeowners allowed access to those properties? That's my first question.
Yeah, so the first thing you do is actually you trench around the known inf- infection. And so you literally go in there with a, a trencher, and you dig a five-foot-deep trench. It's not, you don't actually dig it, you just drag a blade through, and you cut those roots. So the first thing you do is you stop the spread. And you might even do two rings of that, where you cut the root systems. Then what you're going to do is put, is cut down the affected trees, but you don't want to cut down the affected trees until you've done the trenching for complicated reasons, because that just speeds up the fact, once they're cut down, it speeds up the spread to adjacent trees. So first, first you trench, then you cut down the affected trees, you dispose of those trees, and then you treat all the trees nearby with fungicides that reduce the probability that those trees will, if they've already got it, maybe you stop it before, before it gets there. But you have to mon-, you have to treat and monitor all of the trees within, I think it's 120 feet of the known infestation. You treat those trees, you monitor them, and hope that that's it, that you stop it there. If another tree gets infested, then that starts a new perimeter, basically, and you do more trenching, and, and you do more treating until you stop the outbreak.
I see. So thank you. So, and again, I appreciate the clarification. So these aren't, what I would say, a simple injection. There's trenching, there's property, you know, changes to the property that would have to happen to go ahead and mitigate this. Um, that, that's interesting. So I guess I, I still go back to, how is, how could we potentially, and this is for staff and the board, how would we truly enforce that if a homeowner says, um, no, you can't dig up my property, remove my tree, et cetera? I mean, I, I go to, initially, I had the thought of, you, you're giving the homeowner a notice to cure, and they've decided maybe either not to, and then we're showing up also to say, hey, we can help, and we can remove the tree, we can trench it, we can do all these things, and let's do that at the cost of taxpayers. Boy, this is not an, an easy solution here. And I just wanted to, I guess, with that example, maybe get some more board input and what others are thinking around, is this truly enforceable? I'd love to say that the township shows up with a solution to say, hey, we can fix this, let's go ahead and do it. Okay, maybe there has to be something punitive if a homeowner refuses, but I think it's hard to show chain of custody or how the infection started. Maybe they would say it came from another oak tree on somebody else's property, and then we're, we're, are we litigating an, another property? You know, what does that look like? I just think this gets very complex to be able to, and maybe this is a question, so let me pause, and I'll ask this back to our, our tree commission. Is this something that's relatively easy to show which tree was, we'll say, um, ground zero for this, if there are multiple trees in the area?
Once a tree has been tested and it is shown to be infected, then it really doesn't matter where it started, it's the new ground zero. So I'm not sure that really matters. Um, if a property owner refused to treat their trees, refused to let us mitigate on their property, and their trees get oak wilt disease, it doesn't really matter where it came from, now their trees are, are a nuisance to all the other trees around them. And if that happens, and they refuse to let us do preventative measures, then they made a choice to allow their trees to become vectors for this disease. And so I think regardless of where ground zero was, um, they've made a decision that, in my opinion, they should be, there should be some responsibility for.
I see.
And I-
And I, oh, please, sorry.
Just going to say, I think the township manager has some things to share, or at least some experience, maybe not necessarily with this in particular, but, you know, to answer your questions, Mr. Heller.
Thank you, Chair. I certainly am not here to discuss the technical side of things and the injections. I think that, um, that's, that's information that we've heard, and, and that's great. I think when it comes to, to assessing ordinances that have been enacted here at Ferguson Township, as well as other municipalities like Patton Township, you know, they do have an ordinance that requires and specifies specifically, for example, like the duties of the property owner, right? And so when you write into the code, this would be, if, if, if the board wanted to pursue what enforcement might look like, or how you uphold some accountability, um, you can, of course, a private residence can refuse and say, I don't want anybody on my property from the, from the township, but when it's written into the code, um, the procedure and process as to how the enforcement takes place, they first would get a notice of violation, right? And so, you know, there's, there's action that can be done if the board wanted to pursue options to mitigate. Um, Patton Township has a great ordinance, of course, I, you know, that we share the same solicitor. I imagine it's been vetted by a solicitor, it's been, it's gone through legalese. I think if the board wants to, to mitigate and manage with a level of enforcement, I want you to be aware that there's, it, it's all about how we write the code, and that's essentially what we're, what you're being asked this evening, is how do you want to assess the fiscal impact? What, if any, changes do you as a board, from a governing body perspective, want to do when it comes to the fiscal impact? Do you want to continue to absorb the cost to mitigate, or do you want to put it on to the property owner? And if that's the case, we would work with our, with legal to identify what that, what the, what language we need to put in to ensure that those actionable steps are taken that give our urban forester and other staff perhaps the authority to be able to respond to the potential, you know, to, to assess, to determine if there is a spread of oak wilt, and if there is, what the authority is that we need to have in our code that would give our urban forester or any other official with the proper authority to go in and, and take, take action. So there's the fiscal impact, there is, do we want to enforce this ordinance inside the regional growth boundary and outside the regional growth boundary, or just one or the other? I think everything that I've heard this evening from the tree commission, I absolutely think it's valuable in your decision-making, but taking it back to that fiscal impact, do we want to continue to absorb the financial impact of mitigating oak wilt, which is an important thing that needs to be done, whether the township's absorbing it, or the, or we're taking action and writing into our code that gives the township the enforcement capabilities to hold the property owner accountable? Do you want to enforce township-wide, or do you want to only, or do you want to continue to only enforce inside the regional growth boundary?
Again, I want to clarify, there's two things. There's the pruning ordinance, and then there's the mitigation. We're only saying that the pruning ordinance should be township-wide, but if you choose to make the mitigation township-wide, that's fine too. But there, again, if a fire starts and it's not threatening anything, then you don't need to put it out. So there are situations where things are urgent, the, the risks are high if you don't mitigate. There are other situations where it's not, and so you need to also have some flexibility about where you decide you're going to spend a lot of money mitigating something that may not be a threat to any other adjacent properties.
Can you explain that a little bit more? Are you saying somebody that owns like a thousand acres, and there's true oak wilt, the what, or what's the? The what, or what's the?
Well, if you have a thousand acres that's all oak, and then that's another property that's got oak in it, then maybe, um, you know, it's a public issue. But if you have, if you have twenty acres and, and it's completely surrounded by cornfields, you own the whole thing. Then it's not necessarily a public issue. I mean, to some degree it is, if there's an oak wilt outbreak there. Then that's a place where bugs can take that oak wilt and spread it somewhere else. Maybe we should mitigate it there. But it's less of a priority there than it is if it happens in Park Forest on my property. And I've got other properties all around me where if I don't deal, if we, if somebody doesn't deal with the oak wilt on my property. It's gonna spread to adjacent properties. And there are greater values at stake. The value of an oak tree in Park Forest is much higher than the same oak tree out on a twenty acre, forty acre lot. That's surrounded by farm fields and doesn't have any property on it.
So is it fair to say that naturally some pruning of oak trees would occur because of wind or lightning strikes? Like, so for instance, if in Rothrock State Forest, there's a windstorm over the summer and.
Yes, absolutely.
So that would happen. And so then there is a chance then that the oak wilt could spread from a state forest down to us. So then we would be left with having to mitigate.
But it's less likely to spread to your property if you don't prune your oak trees. But that doesn't mean that your oak tree might have a broken branch from a windstorm or something like that. But if we start, but if we prune oak trees during the growing season, we increase the number of, we increase the probability of that.
I get that, and I, I guess what I'm saying is that, that naturally some pruning will occur because of wind, et cetera. But it's then, maybe it goes through the tree root system is what you're talking about. I guess what, I, I am one hundred percent checking with you and following you, I'm just saying, to me, it's dangerous. Because we will have natural events where pruning is going to occur April to October. And maybe it will go through the root system because I haven't pruned mine. But something needs to help stop it, you know? And so I, for me, it's sort of an easy thing that, how, how we go about this. And I'd say for, for getting this going, I mean, isn't it really two steps? Or can we do what we did with our other ones, to say, make a motion to repeal? And, uh, what can we say that one that says it's just in the regional growth boundary and make it everywhere? We start with that? Do we all agree with that, that it should be township wide?
You, you, you can make the motion if you want.
Well, I don't know which one, I guess, is it the first part there?
It's not really one of those. That's part of the reason why I came here, because it's not real clear from these recommendations. There isn't a clear connection between that and what we're recommending.
So the options and considerations in the agenda are the areas that I would, I would really refer the board to give consideration onto what, if any, action you would like. I know that the board has consistently discussed what ordinances and policies require these allocation of funds. And, and of course, my response is, it's always on the website, we can always go look. I mean, since the existence of Ferguson Township, we've been enacting policies. And a great deal of them have some direct and indirect allocation of funds that are required. That aside, this is one of them, it came across to, to my office as a result of that procedural legislative correction that needs to be made. And then further identifications were also brought to me like, hey, this isn't very equitable. And I think the board really should give some consideration to it, and I agreed. So I, you know, whether, whether you can appreciate or, or disagree with the recommended motion. It's really looking at options and considerations, one through four. Do you want to have some changes based on policy and fiscal alignment? Do you want to have some administrative enhancements? Do you want to update your education and outreach? And if not, I think that's, that's, that's your decision as policymakers. But recognizing, I think the last discussion we brought to you is that we, the township mitigated abatement. And with the injections and the tree removal, it was around, give or take a thousand, twenty thousand dollars. And so it's not, it's not, it's not relatively inexpensive. And I think, you know, to your point, super, um, Mrs. Stevens, yes, I mean, you may all recall the storm in April of this year, April twenty ninth. It was an unprecedented storm, limbs break, the spread does carry. And, you know, I, I don't disagree either that if you're in a neighborhood that has smaller lots. That is absolutely an area of focus, I would imagine, for the township. But that's not to say that property owners with wider lots or bigger lots absolutely don't have other, you know, situational concerns. It just depends on the level of focus. And, and, and really what I'm looking for the board to give consideration to, based on things that you've shared throughout the last couple of years, is that fiscal impact. Where would you like that fiscal alignment? And you can absolutely table this discussion, unlike the other two, they were directly related to the budget discussions. We didn't want to not have this on for this agenda, given that the survey responses were gathered as part of the earlier two agenda items. We wanted to bring you the three agenda follow-up items. But this is one that if the board tabled for further discussion, I don't know would be a problem. And is not tied to the budget necessarily.
Can I make one final comment? I'll make it quick. So we spent a lot of money planting trees and pruning trees and, you know, increasing the number of trees. So why not also spend money preventing losing big trees, which are impossible to replace in any kind of short timeframe? So yes, it's spending money, but we already spent money, planting trees, pruning them, managing them. This really isn't any different from that.
Mr. Heller.
Yes, I just want to clarify, I'm actually okay with spending the money for this one, because I think the trees are important. I think, um, you know, my only concern is just the punitive action and what that would look like in the scenarios that we talked about this evening. So I would think I would like a little bit more time to consider this and would offer to table it.
Anyone else? I think Omari's stretching again. Mr. Patterson, do you have a question? Move the table.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I think I agree with what I've heard here, expanding the pruning to, you know, other areas. But I, I am in favor of, you know, mitigating the oak wilt and, and dedicating funds to that. So, uh, yeah, if we want to come back to this and, um, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with coming back to it. Mr. Keo.
There are at least two of us here who have sat for five hours, four hours.
Four hours.
Four hours. And, and I'm not happy about, at least for two of us who were here only for this issue. To move out, without saying anything. I may forget what I need to say, and the time will get to another meeting.
I, I do apologize for the length of the meeting.
Are you gonna take some lead back, or what are we thinking?
Did you have anything regarding this item you wanted to add?
Yeah, there are two of us here who have public comment.
Well, bring your public comment forward.
Well, I hadn't been told I could do that.
You can do that now.
My fear is that you'll go to sleep.
I'll, I'll, I'll stay awake.
Too late.
We're talking, just in terms of a position of context of all of this. We're talking about an act of nature. And I don't think we can debate that. It's an act of nature that this is occurring. I think that it clearly is a regional issue, not a township by township issue. Or a street by street issue, or a development by development issue. In terms of Stevenson's comment earlier. If you ask our arborists, if you ask our tree commission, if you do any research on oak wilt. You will find nationwide, it is a significant problem and nobody has stopped it. Slowed it down maybe. Look for an oak tree in Texas. So we're talking about something that isn't just a neighborhood kind of thing. This is a big deal. I guess one of my other comments is, what about Dutch elm disease? We know we have it here. What about Emerald Ash Borers? We know we have them here. What about our woolly adulgence? The hemlocks, we're losing them fast in the area. We don't have many chestnuts left, because that's already been to us and gone through. So it's my impression that we're talking about a bigger issue than just oak trees and oak wilt. We're talking about acts of nature and how we want to respond to those acts of nature. Let alone the spotted lanternfly, uh, which thrives on Tree of Heaven. Which is a, an invasive species. And maybe we ought to put all our efforts in the region in getting rid of the Tree of Heaven. To deal with this spotted lanternfly a little bit. That's just the general comments that I wanted to make. I have some specific kind of comments with regard to the memo that Manager Martin sent out to you all. Under the public input summary. I did attend both of those public input opportunities. I gotta tell you folks, they were both good. We actually sat here and had conversation between the staff, James, who led it, and the public. Both of them were fantastic. And, and so I want to commend staff for allowing that kind of conversation on this particular topic. The first bullet talks about uneven enforcement. Well, we don't have an even township. We've got a suburban township and we've got an ag township. So there's gonna be uneven environments that these two home-related, residential-related, industry-related bodies are involved with. So uneven enforcement, we, having it can be justified. The fourth bullet. Desire for alignment between policy and fiscal responsibility, and I'm not sure what that means. Ensuring private property owners share in the cost of abatement where applicable. I'm not sure I heard that statement in our public input meetings. But it's here and it's presented to you as a summary of statements in that, those meetings. But I'm not sure that I heard, private, ensuring private property owners share in the cost of abatement when applicable.
If I may, what did you hear on that topic? No one talked about it?
I believe that, that there was some comment about continuing with the township's support of that. But I don't remember hearing the residents that were here say that they were willing to take on that cost themselves.
So, okay.
Could have been a survey.
Yeah, it could have been in the survey.
Then there's the survey findings. And the survey findings were referenced in all three of the discussions tonight. And Manager Martin did indicate to you that there were three hundred and forty-one responses, responses to the survey. Doing a little math, our population is eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven according to the survey, according to the census. That represents one point seven percent. But our little kids don't get to fill out these surveys. So I asked, what is the census number for eighteen and over in our township? And that census number is sixteen thousand two hundred and forty-six. So if I take the number of survey responses and deal with the sixteen thousand, that's over eighteen. I get the fact that our survey was responded to by two percent of our population. That's not even statistically significant.
Are you sure?
It's gonna say reasonable sample size, if a lot of polling is usually about a thousand people, well, yeah.
It's not a randomized, probably representative.
I'm thinking late too.
Then there's a comment under survey findings that these figures suggest strong community support. For proactive tree management coupled with transparent, equitable enforcement. When you're dealing with these kinds of numbers, I, I take issue with strong community support as a phrase. To preliminate, uh, as a preliminary to the other part of the discussion. I just, I, 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 I'm, I'm just not sure that that's a good way to present that statement. Under the options and considerations. Establish a, number one, establish a graduated education first penalty structure to emphasize compliance. Before enforcement, but that's indicating that under number one, I think we're looking for a, a, um, some kind of homeowner support here. Under number two, there is a reference to municipal lien placement for non-compliant property owners. Having in an enforcement environment, a municipal lien on your property is a very serious thing. In the case of the rural population, where borrowing annually is part of our business plan. Having a lien on our properties in the rural section is a serious business impairment. And if we're going to talk about economic development in another day, on another agenda. We've got to seriously talk about liens on properties as a penalty. Because there is an impact here that is very serious. an impact here that is very serious, let alone the homeowner who goes to get a new car. And when they do the, when they do the check for credit and they see a lien on the property, they may still owe you the money, but at a much higher interest rate. Liens are very serious consequences. Number three, administrative enhancements, update definitions of nuisance. Somebody better take a look at the ag laws in the state of Pennsylvania, including the Ag Security Act, which protects from nuisance-related ordinances, the landowners. And that can be a, a serious, a, a, a serious word with regard to the agricultural community when you call something a nuisance and then try and apply it to the ag world. I would suggest that under the administrative enhancements, that we consider the possibility of doing some kind of oak tree inventory, at least within our regional growth boundary. How much are we really talking about, and where are they? The motion that you have in your packet does not address any of the mitigation issues. It only has to do, I think, with the, um, issue of tree trimming. When I read the motion, or when I read the ordinance, it says, "to prevent the spread within the regional growth boundary and residential developments located in zoning districts R1 and RR." Is there a definition of what a residential development consists of? Does a residential development consist of five houses? Does it consist of, of 10 houses? We think we know what it is when we see it, but we probably need to have some kind of definition there, especially outside of the regional growth boundary in the RR section. The fact that you're going to table this for now, I think is fine, but, but I think there are bigger questions than just saving oak trees. I think you probably need to look at a policy of the board that deals with acts of nature so that we have some consistency with how we approach, from a governmental perspective, things like acts of nature, because we will continue to have them, they will be a part of the, of the landscape, and, and trying to assess each one independently may be a real struggle, especially since we have term limits on our boards, and, and we're, we're turning you over in terms of the legislative action, so that there's not that much consistency over a long period of time. Just again, to reiterate, nobody has stopped oak wilt yet nationwide. I don't know about other countries, but I understand other countries have been involved as well. But I think it's a regional problem, and I think it needs to be dealt with at the regional level, but the pruning, not the mitigation, but the pruning ordinance, I think, is a good step and is not necessarily obtrusive to the landlord. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Other public comment?
I promise to be very. Speaking as a forestry professor, I'm familiar with all of the pests and diseases that were mentioned and a whole lot more. This is one which is manageable. We don't just say, fires happen, so why bother putting them out? This is one where we have treatment that can be effective. One individual oak tree in a residential neighborhood can be worth tens of thousands of dollars, and there's lots of research to back that up. Spending 20, $30,000 to protect a neighborhood full of mature oak trees is a very small price to pay. This is a unique problem. I agree, it'd be much better if we had a statewide policy on this, but we don't. We can do something about it here in Ferguson Township, we can do something about this specific pest. Other pests, just emerald ash borer, for example, we pretty much lost all our ashes. There wasn't really a solution to that, and that probably the whole ash genus is toast in North America, and there is nothing we can do about that. On the other hand, Asian longhorn beetle, a potentially huge threat, which a federal agency has taken very seriously, and so far they have contained. So there are some pests and diseases which, with some effort, with some investment, and with sometimes fairly draconian measures, if you happen to be in an area where there's an Asian longhorn beetle, they will come to your property, they will take your, your trees that are host to that down, they won't ask you permission. And by doing that, they've been successful in containing it. So there are some things that we can contain, other things that we can't. Other things, the hemlock will be adultered. In my opinion, yes, that's a big problem, but it's not going to kill all the hemlock trees, and there will be enough that survive, that have genetic resistance to that, and so future generations, it will become part of the landscape, and we will always, well, hopefully we'll always have hemlock trees, but I don't think we won't have hemlock trees because of. So no, they're not all the same. This is a unique problem, there is a solution to it, it's what we've been doing. We have had oak wilt outbreaks in the past five or six years, and we have mitigated them and we have stopped them. This policy has worked. That's all I'd say.
Thank you. Last call for public comments in the room, online. I was going to say, if the board has nothing further, this was tabled, so we'll move into new business.
We voted to table?
What was that, Mr. Patterson?
We voted to table?
Did we have a vote to table it?
I don't think we did, though. I don't know, I don't think they need a motion to table.
I think it was already, the motion was.
I think we made it.
You just have to do the vote.
Oh, okay. There was a motion to table, so all those in favor of tabling, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Okay.
No.
Okay, Mr. Patterson dissented. So new business on the consent agenda tonight, it is with regret, we have received the acceptance, well, the resignation of Robert Cresswellers from our planning commission and the ICDA, which you will need to accept tonight. And then we have the treasures report, some applications for pavement markings, the TACAP application, some paving applications, and, yeah. So if nobody has any of those that they want to pull, I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
This is Patty Samood.
Do we have a second?
This is Lisa Sells, second.
Okay, got a motion by Ms. Stevens, second by Ms. Trickland, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, communications to the board. If none, if there are no communications to the board, as we discussed earlier, for calendar items, the Ferguson Forward Build Session hosted by Fourth Economy, there is a session tomorrow at 8:00, 8:00 a.m. We do have information on our website, should you wish to join. Halloween Trick or Treat Night for the Center Region will be October 31st from 6:00 to 8:00. November 1st is reserved as a rain date from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Our next regular meeting will be on November 3rd, Monday, November 3rd, no less, due to Election Day. And I think the next relevant event of import, Veterans Day will be on November 11th, and our offices will be closed. So that is calendar items, and I will move to Ms. Stevens to continue item 10 from our budget discussion.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.